We need to get ready for the meeting. I had a young lady, she was a student. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school. She was in a school, she was in a school.[188.73]
oversees the renovations. We could reach out to her also.
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, um, the, um, agenda for tomorrow has already been posted, but I will reach out to these individuals and so they can be added to the agenda tomorrow. By the, uh, okay, thank you.
Oh, how goes she love? Ms. Benali, are you managing the, uh, Zoom call from Gallup?
No, I'm not. I'm in my talk in my office.
Oh, okay. All right. You just sounded way far away. Um, committee members, uh, any more discussion on the agenda? If not, then, uh, Mr. Mo's roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Frenel Halona.
Who votes green?
Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Well, Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison Devenica, green. Honorable Edison Devenica votes green. Chair, you have voted five in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you, uh, committee members, uh. With my phone, I can't access for the Zoom notice, uh, I can't access that agenda. So, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali, um, number, uh, adopting journals, there being none, then we go to reports. The first one, uh, Ms. Benali.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, you have, um, the report from the Navajo Area Indian Health Services. It's regarding the, uh, shortage of nursing and healthcare providers on the Navajo Nation. Short and long-term plans to address health personnel shortages. And the presenters are Rosalind So, area director, Marquis Yasi, Director of Office of Indian Self-Determination. And Mr. Yasi indicated that Ben Alfred from IHS is also on the line.
Okay, so, uh, with that, Ms. Rosalind So, we appreciate your attendance and we really look forward to this report. You have the teleconference floor.
Thank you, uh, Chairman, Honorable Chairman, uh, Daniel So, as well as, uh, Vice Chair Slater and honorable members of the House Committee. This is Rosalind, uh, So again, the area director. Um, this is Ching, this is Ching, this is Ching, this is Ching. Again, thank you for the invite for today. I am glad to provide, uh, a few, provide a few updates. Uh, one, uh, before I turn it over to, uh, Mr. Yasi, I wanted to just give an update that our priorities continue to be the focus on vaccine and boosters. These, we, we know that these are absolutely important to combat, um, COVID-19 and also what we're facing right now with Omicron. Uh, so there's a lot of activity, a lot of work is, is going on there. Uh, we're also continuing to encourage the, the use of wearing mask, appropriate mask. Uh, again, cloth masks are probably not what we're recommending, uh, at this point. We're recommending that the CDC, uh, required mask for everyone to be wearing. Of course, continue to social distance when we can. Um, as we, uh, over the past, probably the past three weeks now, we have really been closely monitoring our staff situation as, um, every facility will tell you, this has become a huge challenge for us. One of the things that we're looking at as well, um, to just make sure we're tracking everything that's going on. As you can see, the daily cases, uh, being provided every day, uh, th- these, we know that, that Omicron is on the Navajo reservation. We know that our cases are multiplying every single day at all of our facilities. And in the last three days, I can tell you from the information that's reported up, uh, we've had seventy-three employees throughout Navajo Area IHS test positive for COVID-19. Uh, what's happening here is that even though our hospitals are very busy and we're struggling at times to get patients out of, um, IHS facilities to get them to a higher level of care, it's still a challenge for us. And so as we lose staff, this is, again, the reason why we're pivoting to make sure that every facility is fully staffed or appropriately staffed for the, for the beds that we have available, uh, going on. Uh, we're also doing a lot of, we're having a lot of conversations with each of our hospitals about the crisis of care standards. Again, what this means is that, and, and this is changing daily, as you can imagine, with the staff that might be called out as a result of COVID-19. Um, so we're having to look at this every single day to see what programs need to be shut down because we're going to have to redeploy employees to other, other, uh, operations that need, that we continue to, to provide. And then the last priority is we're really working on the water infrastructure. There's a lot of internal conversations and I hope sometime soon that we can get a conversation with this committee to, to provide some updates and some conversations that, um, I believe need to be had, Mr. Chair. Uh, and then, uh, and then in September, uh, of, of twenty twenty-one, we brought on our, um, Melissa Waiko, we, we stole her from the Albuquerque IHS. She's been, um,
Good morning. How's it going?
She's been a godsend to us in terms of the work that she has been doing for us. Uh, she has reviewed every site already, um, since she's been here and, uh, really leading our recruitment and retention specifically as they relate to our nursing program and really evaluating our systems to make sure that we are where we need to be for, for, for all hospital operations and really looking at that quality component that I have talked about over the, the, um, the time that I've been here. Uh, Mr. Chair, with that, I want to just give you an update of what we are looking at, what I'm monitoring on a daily basis. I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Marquis for his updates. Thank you, sir.
Uh, good morning. This is, uh, Marquis, the Director for the Office of Indian Self-Determination. So I just want to say it's a real pleasure, um, to be here with you virtually, um, at this special meeting. Um, again, thank you, Chairman So, um, and Vice Chair Slater and the Committee for your leadership. Um, I believe that our partnership, um, has grown stronger and will continue to grow into the new year. Um, and I think we are working on a number of key issues, um, and hopefully we're able to work with you and continue to work with partnership, uh, throughout the year. So just want to say I appreciate and value this partnership, uh, with the Navajo Nation. Um, and, and again, just as Ms. So had mentioned, uh, I'm pleased to, uh, welcome Ms., um, um, Melissa Waiko as our Navajo Area Nurse Consultant. And this is a critical, uh, component of, of the Navajo Area IHS. And, uh, Ms. Waiko has been a registered nurse for, for thirty-plus years, um, working in various capacities within the IHS, such as nurse, public health nurse, uh, unit manager, uh, Director of Public Health Nursing and Chief Nursing Executive. Um, and she's also had the time working with the, uh, Gallup, uh, Rehoboth McKinley Christian Hospital located in Gallup, New Mexico. And, and, um, so she has a number of years of extensive, uh, working knowledge, uh, with, uh, uh, nursing, uh, as well as, uh, other, other long-term care plans, uh, for the Navajo area. Uh, and I also want to recognize some of our six thirty-eight facilities who are also, uh, have joined the call, such as Dr. Atkins and Port Defiance, uh, Mrs. Margaret Lynch, Dr. Alfred, Miss Sally Pete from, from Winslow, uh, as well as the Tubus City Regional Healthcare Corporation, who are also aligned and they, they may, um, be providing, um, some areas related to the nursing shortages. I, I'm not too sure. I, I didn't see them on the, on the agenda, but, uh, I certainly welcome um, that their collective input as, as they are part of the system as a whole within the Navajo Area IHS and working in partnership to address some of these, uh, common themes, uh, of, of issues. Uh, but with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Ms. Melissa Waiko, uh, to give, uh, a report on some of the shortages of nurses as well as some of the short and long-term care plans, um, on, on these issues. Ms. Waiko, thanks, Ms. Waiko.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for, um, inviting me to your meeting today. Um, I wanted to take this opportunity to report to you on our nursing shortages and our nurse vacancies that we have within IHS in the Navajo area. As most of you are aware, we have a national shortage of nurses in the whole United States. And one of the things that we have been challenged with within the Navajo area is that we have a current vacancy rate of forty-two percent. Um, added that, we have a total of eight hundred and eight, uh, nurses, nursing positions that we have, um, throughout Navajo area. We have a total of four hundred and sixty-five R and positions that are filled and the total number of vacancies that we have is, um, three hundred and forty-three. And with this, we are using, utilizing nursing contract services to supplement the vacancies. And throughout the Navajo area, we have a total of, um, um, one hundred and forty-two nurses that we utilize and, um, to supplement the areas that are vacant, especially in our emergency room and in our ICU. And some of the challenges that we have is that we're competing with the surrounding areas of, um, Albuquerque area and then the Zuni service units with the emergency room. Um, higher, the, the emergency room services is a higher need and, and we have a lot of vacancies throughout Navajo area, including our ICU, um, units. So with this, what we have been doing to try to recruit and retain, um, nurses is that we have been utilizing the current IHS salary table that was revised in November of two thousand and twenty-one. And so the current nursing salary has been upgraded to meet the open market and meet the private sector, um, throughout the United States. So our nurses got a pay increase. And with that, they also had to do an adjustment on their retention incentives that most of the nurses in the federal system, um, receive. We also offer relocation incentives, um, for those individuals that are, um, transferring to, from another IHS facility to another. We also utilize our recruitment incentives for all new federal nursing employees that have never been in the, in the, um, in, in the Indian Health Service. Um, the other things that we are doing as far as recruitment, recruitment incentives and our, our short-term plan is to continue to advertise our positions in local, um, uh, newspapers, um, nursing board, magazines, websites, social media like Facebook, LinkedIn, um, other ways to address some of those vacancies to, to provide assistance to our nursing staff is to look at different ancillary, um, and per- paraprofessional staffing like licensed practical nurses, health technicians slash medical assistants, nursing assistants to help with direct patient care areas, especially during this time that we are facing. And so some of those efforts have been, been started by different service units with your nurse recruiters. Um, we've had to, um, invest in some of the marketing strategies to, um, compete like, like I said, within the state of New Mexico, we have to compete with the surrounding areas in trying to recruit nurses. And with the increase in our nursing salary within IHS, that we've had some, um, uh, individuals or nursing staff that we have hired throughout the Navajo area. Um, so it has been a challenge, but each of the service units are continuing to recruit actively and try to fill those vacancies, um, and then supplementing those vacancies with contract nursing staff. And that is my report for the nurse vacancies and the challenges that we have with our, um, with what we are face, facing today with the COVID pandemic. Um, the only other thing that I wanted to also address was the fact that Ms., um, that we've, in throughout the beginning of the pandemic, we've had a total of a hundred and forty-seven nurses who have been, who had tested positive with COVID. And so that also, um, is a challenge when we're looking at our nursing shortages in each service unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. So, Mr. Yasi and Ms. Waiko. Committee members, do you have any questions? Or our presenters? Ms. So, uh, previously you had reported, um, the number of losses of healthcare providers to the COVID. Do you have updated numbers in that regard?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have that number readily in front of me. I know that, um, with employees that have tested positive for COVID in the Navajo area is over twelve hundred. That's since the beginning of COVID. Um, so we, we definitely track all of that information. I know that as of this morning, it's over twelve hundred employees. But as I said, just within the last three days, um, we've had seventy-three employees test positive. So I suspect and expect that number to continue to grow for Navajo Area IHS. Um, if we're looking at, at actual loss, loss of life, um, I'll have to go back and look at, look at that number and, and share that as well. Also, I, I think it's important to also share that, you know, when I first, um, got to Navajo area, we, we always have had a shortage of nursing, uh, in, in the Navajo area and actually throughout, throughout, um, throughout the country. But, um, we've really focused on that part. So how much of this is actual what we were experiencing before COVID and what we're experiencing after, you know, as a result of COVID, I think is, is something that we want to continue to analyze. But as part of, um, Ms. Waiko's leadership, I think our focus is really to make sure that we have a, um, workplace environment that supports, um, all of our staff, not, not just our nurses, but that supports all of our staff and making sure that we're addressing concerns as they arise and looking at, at what is best for them. As, as I just said about PPE and so forth, you know, of course, at the beginning of, of COVID, we, we were in a very different situation than we are today. However, right now, today, we're really having to monitor our PPE just to make sure that we have sufficient supply for all of our staff and the patients that we serve. So there's a number of different dynamics that I think we, we are, we, we do track and we are looking at. I am very concerned about the staff that we have right now. We have a little bit of help from the New Mexico Department of Health that has, um, provided us some additional nurses at the Navajo area, uh, excuse me, at the Gallup Indian Medical Center. Um, and so that's been extremely, uh, helpful to us. We are also looking, right now, working with the, uh, DOD, working through the federal process to see if we can get some additional support as we anticipate that our numbers will continue to grow in Navajo. And then out of Chin Lee, we again have been very, uh, fortunate to have the, uh, Arizona Surge Line help us with some nurses out there. We know that these nurses will, will be going away, but our plan is that we have to have, uh, sufficient staff probably through March, uh, and, and we're anticipating that we will have to be on alert and, and, uh, monitoring our situation very, very carefully through March. Uh, that's a long time from now when, when we're facing what we're facing right now. We have also adjusted many of our contracts ability. Uh, I know that, that we're, we're starting to see some, some of our contracts being filled with the nurses that we have, although not always the type of nurse that we need, which is, as, as Melissa talked about, our ICU nurses. But that's just, I think, what everyone is facing right now. The last thing is that, um, the cost of these nurses, the cost of our contracts is also something that we're probably every facility is looking at. Is that, um, we, we are clearly in the millions of dollars when we're talking about trying to staff nurses to today versus, uh, and then also trying to plan out through, uh, at least March of this, of this year. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. So. Um, committee members, any follow-up questions?
Uh, Chair Salona.
Uh, Chair Salona.
Uh, go ahead. Honorable Halona.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'm just curious, uh, I thank you for the report, uh, uh, in which my chest and good morning, Mrs. Rosalind So. It's good to hear your voice again. I, uh, I've been trying to find out if, exactly, I know there was one report of the Omicron that was reported on the Navajo Nation. And, uh, has, uh, has there been others reported on the nation as well? And how fast is that growing? Have you got a handle on that yet? That, uh, that's the question I had right now. Uh, thank you. Ms. So.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Delegate Halona. So yes, um, there, there was a case that's been identified. Remember also that there's sequences, you know, we don't send every test to, to, uh, to, for testing to determine, uh, the type of, um, COVID. But we, we believe without a doubt, just because of the numbers and the, the immediate increase that we have seen over, whether it's related to the Christmas holiday, whether it's related to New Year's and those kinds of maybe gatherings that, that were occurring. We know that right now, the numbers that we're looking at right now, that Omicron is on the, on the Navajo Reservation. And, and so our strategy is that, that, I mean, that's how we are planning, that, that we know that it's on. I do look at, uh, facility types of information, again, trying to track, to see. And, and, um, just the increases at Gallup, for example, are just, um, uh, a little bit scary at this point. But again, when you take those positive cases and compare to, so, so, so I think what's a challenge for us right now and probably everybody else is that, yes, we can look at positive numbers and we're looking at those, those, uh, types of cases and still trying to do contact tracing and all of these other things. But we're also having to pivot to see just exactly what are we going to evaluate? Because the numbers, we know the numbers are going to be high. And so as a result of that, we're, we're now looking at hospital capacity, uh, and then our staff. Because those will be depending on who's coming into our facilities, who's actually needing hospital care. Um, as you can see, even with those cases, um, that there's, you know, even though our hospitals are very, very busy, that we're still, for, for right now, for today, we're still able to hold our own in terms of addressing some of these things. But the challenge is, last Friday, as I, um, shared, that our, one of our facilities had to go and divert because we could, because our hospital beds were full and we could not get patients out. So over the weekend, we were able to, to get some patients out that needed to get out. So that's what we're looking at right now. So we're kind of shifting the way we look at, uh, COVID to really look at hospital capacity and our staff. Because this is, our staff is going to drive our hospital, that, well, it always drives our hospital capacity. But right now, that's what we are evaluating on a daily basis. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. So. Committee members, anybody else with a question for IHS personnel?
Delegate Paul Begay.
Oh, Mr. Chair, you go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, Che, uh, Chair, members of the TSC Committee. And, uh, thank you also. It's good to hear your voice, uh, Shala, uh, Rosalind So. Thank you for the report. Uh, talking about, uh, Omicron and Omicron and the Delta virus, all these coming upon us. Um, did, I know, uh, uh, self-test kits that are available out there. How, how is the availability of that? It seems to me that, uh, those, uh, people that frequent out to, uh, oh, uh, to crowded areas or to meetings or that, that, but in particularly, people that may be a public servant, uh, going out to, to the people. Sometimes it's necessary to attend meetings in person. Uh, sometimes a public servant is, uh, has to go out to a meeting in person. Are those types of self-testing available and how much of it, of availability does it have for us? Uh, some of us delegates, uh, will be, uh, driving to the State Capitol in Phoenix, uh, today and attending the tribal leaders, uh, day tomorrow. And other plans are in place to meet with, uh, the state leaders on some tribal issues. Those are the, uh, the situations that, um, I think, uh, self-testing should be available. You know, when you go out throughout the day attending meetings, uh, you go back to your home or, or a motel and you would like to feel assured that you're okay. That's when the test kits can become, uh, 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 something that you can rest, uh, rest assured on. But tha- that is my question, uh, Ms. So. Uh, it is, uh, the dish gift chair. Uh, thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, good morning, um, again, Delegate Begay. A very, very good question and thank you for that. This is something that we have been working on to try to get all of our, um, service units have, uh, these test kits that are available. We've been working with the chapter houses, at least for the, again, I'm, I'm speaking for the federal sites, working with the chapter houses to make sure that they have sufficient, uh, test kits. I, I think nationally, there's been, uh, conversations that, that, that these test kits are hard to find. Um, but we do have, Indian Health Service has a distribution, uh, process. They were a little bit delayed around the first of, um, January, so that was, um, that was a, a, a little bit of a challenge for us. And, uh, but, but we do have sufficient supplies. Every healthcare facility can order some, uh, specifically for the, uh, the tribal council, uh, if, if it's okay. I will work with, um, the Speaker's Office to make sure that there's a supply over there for the delegates, or if there's another way that you want me to have, uh, to provide a supply to the, to the, uh, Navajo Nation, um, delegates, I, I will be glad to do that. But we do have a supply. I know we have some in the area office right now, so we can, uh, deliver them over to the Speaker's Office. Uh, it is important, though, that we, we continue to look at the CDC guidelines and their recommendations for when to test. Um, testing is, is always when you're, at this point, just because of everything that we're looking at with Omicron that's spreading so fast, it does look at some of the, it does require or request that, that you test when you, uh, when you are symptomatic. And then also a couple of days after that, just to make sure that everything is, um, moving through, through, um, like it should. Uh, so, so we can make the test kits available and I'm glad to work with you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. So. Good, um, I guess, uh, I guess for the folks on the call, um, the Omicron, Ms. So, I don't know if you have anybody, uh, well, Ms. Waiko might be able to, um, provide part of the answer. What are the most, uh, common symptoms? Let's say folks that have received, uh, the vaccine and the booster, but then become exposed to Omicron variant. What is the most common symptom that lacking, uh, let's say, a test? Uh, what is the most common symptoms? They would, uh, um, use to say, I need to stay home, I need to isolate. Uh, for those folks, uh, not close to a testing site or not close to a facility. Thank you.
Good morning, um, Honorable So, this is.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Waiko.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, so one of the things that we have been noticing. Um, so one of the things that we have been notifying or letting patients know that are unable to, um, come to a facility to get tested or, um, you know, is to just stay home and isolate. And, and especially just, just staying home, what, that's one of the things. And one of the most common symptoms, um, for those individuals that are vaccinated, sometimes most of them don't have any symptoms. And so it's, it's really hard to say, but for those that do have symptoms, the Om- Omicron virus is almost, uh, as common as the common cold. So they look at fever, chills, um, body ache, muscle ache, headaches. And so it's, so if you start having any of those symptoms or even runny nose and you're not able to get to a facility to get yourself tested or to a testing site, um, these would be the, the common symptoms to look out for. Um, and then just stay home and isolate. Um, and if there is family members that, even if it's just one or two common, um, symptoms like a runny nose or sore throat, um, or just not feeling, um, well, as sometimes people can feel fatigue or feel like they're tired, um, and they haven't been feeling like that, these are most of the common symptoms. And then unfortunately, the, the Delta virus, the Omicron and the common cold all have the same type of symptoms. So that's why it's very hard to determine, um, if you have either the COVID virus or just the common cold. And that's why we usually tell patients to go get themselves tested. But if they're not able to, they can just stay home with these symptoms and isolate themselves from everybody else and make sure they wash their hands if, if they don't have running water. But if they have sanitizing, um, um, solutions, they can do that, like the hand gels, um, they can do that as well. And try, I know it's the winter season and I know it's been cold out there. Um, and so sometimes it, it does help to open, at least to allow the air to circulate within the house if they're able to. If not, then it's fine too, but they should just isolate in, in one room and separate themselves from their, um, loved ones, even though it's kind of hard to do that. But those would be my, um, suggestions as far as the, the common symptoms to look out for, for those individuals who cannot make it to a testing site. Thank you.
Thank you. But yes, this, uh, that type of information helps us to, uh, work with our, uh, folks. Good guidance, thank you. Um, committee members? Had, any follow-up questions?
Uh, Chair, Halona?
Oh, Honorable Halona, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you, uh, and again, uh, uh, presenters, thank you again for, uh, presenting and, and give us some more insights. I just wanted to find out again on the, um, on the, uh, the shots for the kids underage. Have we, have we got that all approved? And have we started doing, uh, shots for the children that are, uh, five to 12 that are underage? Are, are we working on that? And if we are, how far did we get? If not, how, how far are we going to, before we start seeing some of those, uh, uh, activities being, being, being completed, uh, for the, for the children? Ms. So, Chair?
Uh, Delegate Halona, this is, uh, Marquesa. I believe, um, Ms. So had to step away to a different call. Um, um, Ms. Waiko, do you perhaps have a response to Delegate Halona's, uh, question? If not, um, we certainly would be able to provide a written response to that question. Thanks.
Um, thank you, Mr. Yalzi, and thank you, um, Chairman, our Councilman Halona. This is Melissa Waiko. The children who are in the age of five to 12 are already receiving their vaccination, um, boosters or their primary dose and their secondary dose throughout Navajo area. I don't have the total number of data, but we can get that to you. But I know that each service unit is already vaccinating, um, those children within that age group. Um, recently and every single day, the data with the CDC is always changing as far as the guidelines. Um, but, um, the vaccination for those ages is available, so they could go to any of the vaccination sites within IHS facilities and 638 to provide those, um, vaccinations for Pfizer, um, for ages five to 12 years of age. And right now, it's also open, um, for the boosters for anybody that, um, was between 12 on up, they can also get their boosters as well. Recently, as of yesterday, the CDC changed their guidelines to where that if somebody had received their second dose of either Pfizer or Moderna, um, they've allowed it to be at five months. So, but every day that, uh, guideline does change, and so we have to keep up with what is happening, um, with the CDC. But yes, those vaccination sites are, the vaccine is available for that age group. Thank you.
Okay, committee members, follow-up questions? And, uh, I'd like to also open up the discussion to our 638 healthcare providers, organizations. Uh, Ms. Lynette Bonar, Ms. Sally Pete, Mr. Michael Jensen, and Ms. Edison. And the folks, I, I missed the names of, uh, uh, Tejo Medical, uh, Healthcare Center. You can take turns chiming in to discussion relating to, uh, the nursing shortages and other healthcare providers.
Hi, good morning, uh, this is Lynette Bonar, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, there's, yeah, Lynette Bonar, yes, yeah, hope finds life. This is Shona Boshasche, T'wetchi E'dash Che, Tach'i E'dash Nala. Like to say, yeah, thank you to, um, Hess and Chair So, as well as, um, the rest of the, um, Hess delegates there. Um, I'll go ahead and give a quick over, overview of our issues with shortages. Um, and I, I heard part of, um, Ms. So's, um, report. Um, but here at Tubus City Regional Healthcare Corporation, we have a vacancy rate of 38% on our nurses. We have, um, 10 FEMA nurses here. We have six to eight Arizona SURGE nurses. So the Arizona SURGE nurses are funded by the State of Arizona, which is, really came in handy. Um, we are also have, um, five respiratory therapists from FEMA. And, um, we are also are using staff from FEMA to help us with our, um, vaccines as well as our, um, testing areas. So fortunately, we have that assistance to have all this occur. Um, we are also doing testing on the weekends. We have staff, um, working overtime to do that because, um, a lot of people that are getting tested are going into our ER. And, um, by providing these staff on the weekend, it's not overwhelming our emergency room. Um, we're working with a lot of contract agencies. And as Ms. So said, you know, I would say the amount, um, the cost for, um, contractors for nursing and respiratory therapy probably has tripled in the amount that we normally pay. Um, we're doing a lot of things to retain the nurses that we have. Uh, we've added, um, we've increased our sign-on bonus. Uh, we're doing quarterly retention bonuses, um, for any staff that work in, has, are getting hazard pay that work with COVID patients. And specifically, we have some inpatient ICU and med surg beds for that. So they actually get, uh, 25% more of their pay. But we also extend that to environmental services, um, and anyone that works in that area, um, with our COVID patients. Um, one of the other numbers that was shared earlier, uh, I think that, um, here on the west side of Navajo, we started our surge a little earlier, um, and that started last week, a little bit before that. Um, at the most right now, we've had 70 staff call-ins, and, um, today we have 69. Uh, we, since the beginning of the pandemic, we've had 337 positive employees, and I would say about 10% of those are repeats now. Um, and we're managing that. Uh, we changed a few of our, um, approaches with our PPE. We have enough PPE, we're doing okay. Uh, we are having all of our staff double mask, um, even, um, support services. We changed our, uh, masking to N95 in, um, ER. We had two ERs at one time, and, um, about, uh, two months ago, we reintegrated our ERs. So all of them are wearing N95 masks, especially with Omicron coming on. And our regular staff is wearing a surgical mask and a cloth mask everywhere. Um, and, uh, we're not doing any more elective surgeries. We're only doing emergent, any, and, um, urgent care surgeries. And that's been going on for about three weeks, and we're taking that a week at a time because of all the, uh, Omicron. We've seen, uh, we, um, heard a report from Arizona that 90% of the tests coming back are Omicron. And we finally got some sequencing results back on a few of our patients in our area, um, back to December, Christmas. Um, four of those Omicrons were from the Tubus City area. So we, we're pretty, um, very certain that, um, more than 80 to 90% of our patients positive are Omicron. And, uh, we actually went from about 10 to 15% positives, um, up to, uh, I believe it's, um, 22 or 23% positives now. So we are seeing that surge with, um, a lot of our community, as well as what's happening within our hospital with staff. And the staff, um, are, um, all probably getting this on the outside, uh, in community. So we really stepped up a lot of the things they're doing as far as, um, treatment for patients. Um, if we have issues with clinics where we lose support staff, um, our doctors know to go to telemedicine. And, um, the vaccine mandate also, we probably lost about 10 nurses to the vaccine mandate. Um, so that didn't help, but it made our area safer within the hospital. So, um, you know, 100% of our staff are vaccinated, and the last I looked, 66% had their boosters. So, um, I think that's all I have to report. Um, I'd like to appreciate, um, the opportunity to report to, to all of you today. And, um, like to say thank you, Chairman So. And, uh, if you have any questions, I will be on the line. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Bonar. Committee members, any questions? If there aren't any, then whoever wants to chime in from the 638 healthcare organizations, welcome.
Good morning, uh, Honorable Chair So and Honorable members of the, the Hess Committee. My name's Dr. Jerome Alfred, and I would like to give a report on the behalf of Dr. Atkins and Fort Defiance Indian Hospital Board. Uh, we as well have received, uh, good support from FEMA. We've had a FEMA vaccination team here of five for the last 60 days. They're just finishing up. They've been very instrumental in helping us with not only adult, but they've really helped with the five to 11-year-olds as well, where we've got through our primary and secondary doses with them. We also have a, a team of four respiratory therapists, uh, who are halfway through their tour. We've asked for an extension for them to really help with our, uh, inpatient care. Uh, we also have a relatively high, uh, vacancy rate, but we've filled all those spots plus with contractors. Like everyone else, we're looking at triple the costs of a contractor compared to permanent staff. But we are dedicated here to, to provide, uh, that support, um, to our patients to make sure we can keep, uh, all of our bed staff, so we have the ability to manage, uh, not only COVID but non-COVID cases. Again, has been reflected by some others on this call. Uh, day by day, our ability to transfer to tertiary care centers is, is up and down. Very often, we may have to call 15 to 20 hospitals to find someone. But again, our, we have very dedicated ED staff, very dedicated inpatient staff who are doing their best to make sure our patients are taken care of. Our testing volumes have gone up significantly, so we've done some adjustments. Uh, starting today, we will have testing availability to the community, uh, Monday through Sunday, so seven days a week from eight in the morning till eight in the evening for folks to be able to come in on demand. It's a drive up in one of our tents in the parking lot, to be able to get taken care of. Unfortunately, we have not seen the same increase in demand for vaccination. We still provide vaccination services here, of course, in our clinics and, uh, in a, in a walk-up, uh, unit in our Wellness Center. Uh, we're doing those on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Uh, so the availability for primary, secondary and booster doses for all ages is available there. Uh, we, you know, we've obviously been watching the, the significant increase in our service area, uh, for the community and watching our, our census in the hospital. We're still around 80 to 85% every day as far as our inpatient, but we, we want to be aware of any potential increases that may come with, uh, the Omicron outbreak. Uh, so we have, uh, requested some of our contracting companies to give us even additional contractors to be able to help us manage our inpatient ED and our testing and vaccination capabilities. Uh, so that's, uh, that's the summary of, of our report at Fort Defiance Indian Hospital Board.
Good morning, this is Sally Pete.
Go ahead, Kenada.
Oh, yeah, they shenale, oh, yeah, uh, do, yeah, uh, honorable members of the Hess Committee, I sheh shenale Daniel So, and also Carl Slater Shiyash for your leadership. Uh, I often listen to your meetings to keep up with the information from this leadership group. Uh, shey yahanakaydena, nishloatwudichini bashishin, adutchatshini dashitche do shi tashenale. I'm originally from Red Valley. Um, been working here at Winslow for over 20 years. Um, the report that I'll be doing is on, um, you know, the ner, the providers and the nursing, nursing department and the support staff. And currently, we have a little over, uh, 20 positions of the providers, that these are the physicians. And, um, we have like 4.5 vacant, uh, physi- physician, positions. Um, and that's, uh, like 22.5% vacancy rate. And, and we have six, uh, nurse practitioners that are vac, positions that are vacant. And that's like 50% vacancy rate. And, uh, and upcoming, um, in the near few, very near future. And uh and upcoming um in the near few, very near future, uh at the end of this month, our psychiatry vacancy will be like fifty percent vacancy rate. Uh, dental department, otometry vacancies are okay, there's none. So. And then we're also working on the Delcon Medical Center. You probably all heard about that. And so with the upcoming demand for the providers for the Delcon Medical Center remains a very significant challenge, especially with the COVID still raging through the communities. And we've been unable to so far recruit any providers for Delcon. As far as the nursing, we have over uh seventy positions and we have like thirty-five percent vacancy rate. And as I was listening to the report from Ms. So and Weyko and Mr. Yarzir from Area Office. Um, yeah, we're all experiencing nursing shortage. It's growing at alarming rate for IHS and tribal healthcare facilities. And here, the nursing department have been able to provide nursing coverage with assistance of about thirteen contract nurses for ambulatory clinic. We're not a hospital here, it's all ambulatory. We have urgent care, um really well-run employee health, so we monitor our employees. And we you, we um have patient-centered medical home and which um our providers and our nurses have been working on this for over several years now. And we established the respiratory clinic. Overall, um nursing department has like twenty-one vacant positions right now. Currently, we have like three on nursing assistants out on leave on leave related to COVID. So um employee health program has been has seen uh increase in number of COVID-positive and exposed employees. And so uh we are hurting as far as um trying to keep up with everything. And we have increased in retention bonus and contractors. Um, yeah, that cost increased tremendously. And we also did the uh compensation study for uh all the positions to ensure that our employees are compensated well. And in effort to address these critical issues, we did a resolution that was drafted and approved by the Board of Directors here back in June. And also the management team. And we submitted that on in October to Hess Committee. And I believe that will be presented tomorrow. As I was looking at tomorrow's agenda and um we have our nurses on the agenda. So they will provide more information on nursing shortages and some of the um proposals that will be um discussed at that time. In support staff, um in dealing with COVID infections among the staff members, we have like thirty staff members out. And this is really affecting our overall organizations. And we've been working with FEMA and they provided um one nurse and pharmacist. And which started at the beginning of this month. And then uh let's see here. So um. With the um in working with the all of the other service areas, including six thirty-eight corporations on the Navajo Nation. And we try to coordinate a lot of these um, you know, information very similar as far as um nursing shortage. So um with with um this situation, I believe that we really need to come together to address these issues. But the problem is it's everywhere. And so we really have to make sure that the coverage here where we provide service are adequate. And with that, we closed the satellite clinics in Delcon and Loop. Um, because we need to get additional help from these individuals that were assigned out there. And um with the Delcon Medical Center, as I mentioned, we have a transmission, not transmission, transition team from Winslow. And uh we've been meeting on a regular basis. And um so the team has been meeting and trying to work on this transition plan. And we have new um staff members, um physicians, and some of these are already being advertised. So um the schedule for opening, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting ceremony on March thirtieth. And then uh hopefully, if everything goes well, um grand opening for patient service will be April fourth. So that's my report, Shnala. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, it's another uh committee members, do you have any questions for? This uh Sally Pete.
This is uh Byron Clark with UNHS, I can give a report also.
Okay.
This is Chair, this is Wanika.
Honorable Edison Wanika, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I don't have a question, uh but um I would also like to hear a report from uh Wayne Claw. I think um he's always concerned about the nurse shortage of nurses in his uh program. Also, I think uh has uh information on testing and all that, so would appreciate it, Chair.
Who is that person again? Honorable Wanika, who is it, your name? I didn't quite catch the name.
Uh, Wayne, Wayne Claw.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll let uh 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 let him uh address the group after the six thirty-eight corporation. Who was uh ready to present with that with uh Utah Navajo?
Yes, uh, this is Byron Clark, I'm the COO at Utah Navajo, uh standing in for Michael Jensen, the CEO.
Akushin, uh you have the floor.
Okay, uh, thank you for your time. And um our pattern for the cases, I'll start off with the cases, is very similar um as the other six thirty-eights and IHS facilities. We've seen a tremendous jump in positivity rate. We are now at thirty-one percent. Um, we've expanded our testing. It's um during open hours at all of our clinics, uh walk-in testing. Uh, we've also started to offer take-home options um for the holidays and weekends. And uh we we give those out for free to patients also. We have two different types of take-home options. We use the eLoom um as the the primary one because it um automatically reports back data positivity to our to our system. And then the uh the binax is uh the patient then needs to tell us whether or not it's positive. We also try to verify that with the state PCR one. Um, our staffing situation, we only have uh I think four staff members out with COVID right now. But uh statistically, we expect that to increase. It's an extremely contagious disease. Um, from our ER docs, they have noticed that there is not the accompanying hospitalization happening as in a year ago. So it is encouraging to see that for the most part, these symptoms have been mostly mild for the vaccinated. Um, the staffing and vacancies, so the percentage right now, we have one position open for provider. So that's um three percent vacancy rate. Then we have one RN and one MA position open. Um, out of about eighty, so we only have about three or four, three and a half percent, four percent vacancy rate for nurses. Um, I'm not sure what's different. Um, we 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 had a bit of a shortage earlier this fall, but it's never a vacancy rate that went to more than ten percent. We we did lose uh four staff members, employees to to mandates. Um, but we've mostly recovered for that, we're still recruiting for a pharmacist. Um, we have a FEMA team that handles most of our vaccination program. Most of the sites, it's uh three days a week. And in my valley, it's twice a week where they do va- uh vaccinations all day. And that concludes our report. And we we still do the donation program where we uh try to help people in quarantine with uh food supplies and firewood.
Committee members, do you have any uh questions for Mr. Alfred?
Uh, Mr. Alfred. Uh. I guess uh your vacancy rate for providers and nurses is under ten percent. What do you attribute that to?
So, uh, sorry, my my name is Byron Clark with UNHS.
Oh, Clark, Mr. Clark, I'm sorry.
Clark, yeah, no, it's okay. Um, just going back, I've been here twelve years and I used to be the HR Director. When I started, uh, our vacancy rate in clinical, including nurses and doctors, was closer to the industry average of twenty, low twenties, high teens. Um, that that seems to be more typical in hospital settings and clinical settings. We developed a lot of HR-type programs that were more generous to employees. Um, and we send a lot of money on those. And it's basically just wellness, uh mental wellness, health wellness. Gifts, small bonuses, uh pat on the back type programs that are integrated into the culture. Um, a lot of them are high-tech, they cost a lot of money, uh relatively speaking. But um we we spend a lot on rewarding staff. And that, I think, pays pays off. So for the past um eight years, we've had overall vacancy position rates for all employees of less than ten percent. Um, and we've always had a provider vacancy rate of less, about five percent. And then the nursing vacancy rate has always been similar to the provider rate of about five percent. We don't see very much turnover. But I think it goes back to um investing more on appreciation, letting them know that you care about their work. Um, our board is supportive of these programs. Uh, we get questioned from sometimes outside agencies about our ratio for overhead expenses, administrative expenses. Um, and we explain that it goes a lot to rewards programs, wellness programs. Um, um, we do a Christmas bonus, but we don't emphasize cash bonuses. That's part of it. Uh, for instance, we we don't even do sign-on bonuses for nurses right now. Um, and instead, it goes more to the mental and emotional well-being programs that we offer. So I, that's the only thing I can really think of. Housing is also a big feature for all our providers. We that that work in the remote sites, we offer housing.
On those uh housing um benefits, uh, would they, um, what would you say the facilities cost?
Well, we did. We use, we use modular homes when we build. Um, and we we pay for that out of pocket. So in Monument Valley, Mazumah Creek, Navajo Mountain, we have homes. Not in blending, that's not a benefit offered to blending providers, just the southern ones. And so those are modular homes. And back in the day, it was reasonable to build them. Uh, we'd build them for about a hundred and twenty thousand. And we use that as part of the recruiting and retention. And that's more than paid off for each house. When when you recruit a doctor, uh recruitment bonuses just to the doctor can be twenty-five to fifty thousand, depending on the specialty, let alone the recruiting fee to the recruiters. So uh we uh just built long-term recruitment, called houses, but it's actually recruiting. So um it's it's kind of a pain because it takes some of your money. But in the long run, over decades, that uh it's really paid off for housing. And those probably run under two hundred thousand now. They're not fancy, um, but they they work for the doctors. They're modulators. Some of them are complexes. And there's no cost for that, we pay our utilities.
Thank you. Uh, I guess the other, when we uh visited up there, part of the providers basically said that uh right there at the Mazumah facility, uh, the ones that we did talk to basically liked the four-day weekend or four-day week. Is that still uh the norm?
So we, in Mazumah Creek, we're five days a week, Monday through Friday. Blending is open on Saturday. Um, we shuffle the schedule and try to accommodate the provider as best we can. There's always give and take. But um most of them have contracted for thirty-six hours. Uh, many of them are at forty and some down to thirty-two, some part-time. So we try to get them to commit longer term to something that we can work with um based on what they can do in the long term. Um, it does no good if they twist their arm for forty hours and then they're out six months later for something better. Because doctors can work anywhere, they're always in demand. So we just really try to work on a schedule. And at some point, it's no longer about money uh for the doctors. You know, um, it's more about quality of life. So the Dr. Jones, our CMO, and Herb Claw, our HR Director, really work hard to accommodate schedules, even though sometimes it's difficult, but uh, yeah, that's what we do.
Committee members, do you have any questions? I guess for all the folks on the line, this is one aspect that could be, I guess, modified. Especially for the uh six thirty-eight organizations, for the federal facilities, federal care facilities. It's all mandated by federal rules and regulations. Um, okay, who's next?
Uh, Yate, this is Sharon Edison from Sage Memorial Hospital.
Yes, Ms. Edison.
Hello, thank you for having me. Hello. Thank you for having me on. Honorable Daniel So, Vice President Carl Slater, and everybody on the HESI committee. I'm going to go ahead and say my clan. My clan is I'm Twadidjitni, Senjakanabashishchin, Nakaidanetetachitneydashanala. Thank you for having me on today. Here at Sage Memorial, we have a total of two hundred and eighty-eight employees. And out of the two hundred and eighty-eight employees, most of us have been vaccinated, and most of us have gotten our booster shot. So we have a vaccination rate of ninety-three percent here at Sage Memorial. We do struggle with, you know, shortages of nurses and medical providers as well. Here in our emergency department, we have ten emergency room nurses, and we have ten emergency providers. On our medical telemetry unit, we have eleven registered nurses and two providers. And then in our outpatient department, we have four registered nurses and four providers. And then for administration, there's two nurses as well, too. So sometimes we get pulled to assist in other areas that need assistance. But we could, we could use two or three more staff for each department to assist us with what's happening now with COVID- nineteen. We don't have any assistance from FEMA or even the Arizona surge group. We have requested last year from FEMA, but we didn't get anybody. We also just recently requested some assistance from FEMA, but we haven't heard anything yet. So we're hoping, we're being hopeful that we will get, you know, some assistance from FEMA. Right now, we did add to our contact tracing team, we had a contact tracing team of four individuals, but we added four more individuals to our contact tracing team, because we've been seeing a positivity rate really go up here in our community as well. Two weeks ago, we would be only getting like ten, you know, about ten positivity rate per day, sometimes even less. But recently, we've been hitting fifteen, I mean, not fifteen, but fifty to a hundred positive individuals coming into our contact tracing team. Some of them are tested here at Sage Memorial, some are tested in different facilities. So we usually get the referrals on those. So we've been quite busy with that. Right now, our testing, our emergency department usually does a twenty-four-seven testing for our community members. It could be, it depends. Sometimes we do rapid tests if they're having symptoms. If they're not having any symptoms, we usually send out our swabs to our outsourced lab, and then we usually get those results back in one to two days. We've been working hard as far as our, for doing events out in the community. We are doing one today, actually, at the Gennado High School Pavilion. It started at eight-thirty, and it usually ends at eleven-thirty, but we're keeping it open. Right now, we have reached about two hundred and twenty-three individuals being tested today. So that's usually set up on every Tuesday at the school, so that we can, you know, test more in our community. And we also work with the schools in our area, Gennado Unified School District, Greasewood, Wide Ruins, also the Kipichee Schools here. We usually have a call with them every Tuesday to see how they're doing. And if they have any questions on COVID- nineteen, we will update them. We also provide them with home testing kits for their employees as well, so that they can do testing there for their employees. We also have donated some home testing kits to the tractor houses as well, to give out to community members that may need them, if they can't come to their, to the hospital or to any community testing events. We also have been doing vaccination as well. We have it scheduled for the month, every Wednesday, from two to six PM. And we are doing Pfizer, we're doing Moderna, and we're also doing Johnson and Johnson. And we're taking, you know, pretty much five and older for those vaccination events. But we are having difficulties, difficulties as well, too, for our critical patients that come into our emergency department. We're not able to transfer them anywhere because there's no beds. So sometimes we end up pulling the patient here in our emergency department, or we will admit them into our medical telemetry unit. That is all I have for my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Edison, thank you for providing the report. Committee members, any questions for Ms. Edison? This, as a sidebar note, legislative staff, Ms. Kirk and Ms. Dossi, would we then also divulge the vaccination rate among delegates and among legislative staff? That would be good public information. Thank you. And then even right now, since legislative branch has shut down the positivity rate with, since Christmas, it would be a good, uh, public information for all of the
Chair, this is Marquis Yazi from UHS. I do believe that all of our six thirty-eight sites have presented with regard to some of the questions of nursing and updates. But Ms. Waiko had some follow-up responses related to some of the delegates' questions. And then I just wanted to provide some closing remarks once we're done. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we go to Ms. Waiko, Sotila, Mr. Wayne Claw, you have the teleconference floor.
Good morning. Good morning, Shunantai. It's always good to talk to you and give reports to you. Thank you. I just want to go ahead and give a report on same thing, short of nurses. As of today, we are short of LPNs and RN. There's five we're short. Dean A, eight certified nurse assistants. Unit eight, six of them. Non-MA medical assistant. And most of those have been short for over, I would say, the last two, three years, basically because of short of money. But we've been functioning very well, even though. We are using traveling nurses, contract nurses. We have three here. They're very expensive. I think everybody knows that. We test twice a week now. That's the elders and the staff. We actually closed the visitation when, as of last week, Wednesday, because the numbers of cases went up according to HIGHSHES and Navajo Nation. So we closed it again. We have everybody wearing the N95 masks. We have not had any positive case with the elders. We had two staff that were positive, and they didn't, into the building, we test outside. So we sent them home. They're okay. They're back at work now. We're still a little short on PPEs, basically because they're getting a little more expensive, especially the testing equipment and supplies. All the elders have gotten their three shots. All the staff have received the same thing. Currently, no employees on leave for COVID- nineteen. And I think most of the reason, most of the time, we, I think our retainage is basically because we do have apartments here. And most of our nurses travel quite a bit, and we have apartments here for them. And we don't charge them a large rate for them to stay here. So I think that really helps them retain them. Most of our nurses that have been here have been here for a long time. And I've been here going on nineteen years. And some of these nurses have been here way before I've been here. So they're still with the company. So there's still, there's still needs, like I said, funding needs. We still need to improve our health insurance. We don't have health insurance, which we like to do. Once we do go to six thirty-eight, it'd be nice to do that. And streamline of funding. And we do have, again, I write a lot of proposals to try to get money from outside sources. And we've been pretty lucky. We get a little bit here and there, but we still need additional funding. We know COVID's going to be around for a while. So we do have a proposal that will be coming to the HESI committee. So other than that, we're still doing very well. As everybody knows, we're a twenty-four-seven service provider. And again, we're very lucky, you know, by the grace of God, we don't have any elders that are positive. Thank you.
Committee members, any questions for Mr. Wayne Claw? Okay, now back to, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the committee, I was just thinking, one of the presenters made presentations saying that there's a hundred and forty-two nurses, but they were being used to help Navajo Nation. Could the nursing home at Chinlevi included in that? Or what's the process for that? I'm just wondering. Because it seems like there are real needs for nurses our concern. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I guess now, how do we coordinate some of the, perhaps FEMA providers as well as that organization that was named Arizona, I'm drawing a blank, one that Ms. Bonar had highlighted in her report? Ms. Bonali, did you catch that organization that was also helping with healthcare providers from the state of Arizona?
Excuse me, Chairman So, this is Lynette Bonar.
Yes, Ms. Bonar, thank you for staying on the list.
It's Arizona Surge Nurses, and it's through the Arizona Department of Health Services.
Thank you. Committee, would it be appropriate for the Chair to write a letter to that organization so that perhaps we could help Navajo Land Nursing Home incorporate it?
Chair, I think that's a real good idea, because I know the nursing home has been struggling as far as getting the nurses that are needed over there. So I think that's a good idea, Chair.
Hago she la. Mr. Chatabeta, are you still on the call?
Oh, here, here.
So, let's work on a letter. Ms. Bonar, if you could provide the contact address to Ms. Bonali, and Ms. Bonali can share it with Mr. Beta.
Okay, we'll do that. I'll have Lisa send it that way. Thank you.
Oh, Hago she la. Thank you for being so helpful. Anybody else wishes to chime in on this aspect before I turn it back to Ms. Waiko and Mr. Yazi?
Chair, she la.
Oh, Sotila, you have the floor.
Let's send off again. When do you want to?
I know that you're working remotely, so let's coordinate with my LDA to get the electronic signature. So whenever you have it ready, shoot it off to Mario Tentio. Then from there, we can get it into the email.
Biga, Chair.
Oh, Hago she la.
Shunai, this is Wayne.
Oh.
Again, Shunai, though, committee members, allowing me to speak, just a comment, the nursing home, Chinlevi, I know you speak a lot on behalf of the elders. One of the things we lack here is, we all serve elders. We have sixty-four residents. They're from almost every hundred and ten chapters, some even come from New Mexico now. And I'm sure the six thirty-eight Indian Hospital, the central office in Windrook, we all serve the same people. As a CEO, been here nineteen years. We need help. We need to share. We're all here. We're all here to take care of everybody, including masandoche. Aku, kudo, hodesh, ndo, ashon, eska necha, hayate. I know sometimes we have nurses that come from other six thirty-eight or IHSS to, we're willing to come and help us during the weekend. Just to help us during the weekend. Regulation, ni beni na, ah, kudo, tanhida, nda, nihe. Eska necha, hayate, eskaate. I have some of my nurses here, kain da, she, weekend, no, na, na, da, nish, ah, che. Akut, ashon, de, eska necha, hayate. Ashanit, lo, eh. So please, ashon, de, let's all help each other. We're all in the same business. Nant, ay. So, the I see, no, side, ah, no, the six thirty-eight, though, IHSS. Akway, do, hades, setan, yes, na, in shkanku, do, ni che, da, no, ste. Ni masando, ni che, bahajop, pa'go, et, eh, to, ah, do, undle, tlo, bel, da, il, in. Ah, ku, ba, ah, will, ya, ya, eh, we know how to do that, leshni. Ah, yeah, hado, leshanant, ay, da, thanks for listening to me.
Hago she la, Sachee. I guess, uh, for me, having been close to some of the healthcare services, ever since I came back to the community in nineteen seventy-two, I see that, uh, healthcare services, they help each other. Guess right now, this particular endemic environment, epidemic environment calls for more of that at a higher level. Um, thank you. With that, uh, after, uh, Ms. Waiko and Mr. Yazi make the closing remarks, uh, I would, before everybody starts leaving the call, I would like to, uh, make additional requests of all the organizations. Um, with that, uh, Ms. Waiko, you have the teleconference for.
Thank you, Chairman So. Um, just a couple of follow-ups that was asked, um, prior, um, after our reports. Um, excuse me, there was, um, actually twelve thousand, um, seven, um, twelve thousand, seven eighty, um, test kits that were issued out to the Navajo Nation, um, or to patients that came to the testing site. So they took, um, they were given that many test kits. Um, going back to the question on the five to twelve, eleven euros who have been vaccinated. As of today, um, they have vaccinated eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-five, um, patients. Out of that, three thousand, seven hundred and two are still remaining, um, to get their second booster, so they're partially vaccinated. And the remaining have been fully vaccinated out of that eighteen thousand, so those are the two follow-ups that I'm giving this, um, report to. So, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Waiko. Um, Mr. Yazi.
Uh, thank you for that, Chairman. So, um, I just want to conclude, uh, to everyone, um, who, who are on the call. Um, so many of you have, have risen, um, time after time to meet the challenges of, of, of COVID nineteen over the past two years and, and I just want to say I'm truly grateful uh, for the tireless work and commitment I have seen across the Navajo area, um, as we pull, um, together to fight this pandemic. Um, but with regard to tribal consultation on additional funding, uh, last week, uh, January fifth, the, the IHSS consulted with tribes on funding, um, authorized in the Infrastructure Investment um, and Jobs Act, um, for the IHSS Sanitation Facilities Construction Program. And this funding will provide IHSS with three point five billion, um, for the program. Um, it will improve access to clean water and sanitation systems for hundreds, um, of thousands of, um, beneficiaries, especially, uh, the Navajo Nation. Um, in addition, through the American Rescue Plan, um, the IHSS is also receiving two hundred and ten million to support the public health workforce, um, of that ninety-two million to provide nurses, uh, in the Bureau of Indian Education School System. So, so we'll, uh, continue to work, um, and, and have additional consultations on that. Um, and then just with regard to the Build Back Better Act, uh, does allocate two point thirty-five billion. Um, and the IHSS is, is poised, um, to secure significant funding, um, for healthcare facilities, construction and several other IHSS programs. Um, and the date for written comments regarding these funding sources closes, um, on Friday, uh, January twenty-first. Uh, so please submit written comments if you're able to, and I appreciate the tribal leaders and tribal organizations who have provided uh, valuable input, um, on this funding that'll affect our tribal, uh, communities for years to come. And then just, uh, with regard to vaccines, um, we know that vaccines are safe and effective and that booster doses help, um, broaden and strengthen protection against Omicron and other variants. Um, so it, it is important that we continue to stress to our friends, uh, families and communities how critical, uh, it is to get vaccinated, uh, and to get booster shots. Um, the CDC's website is the best place to find, um, comprehensive, updated information and guidance on the, um, COVID nineteen booster, uh, vaccine shots. And, and then lastly, again, I, I just want to take a moment to recognize all the dedicated, um, and caring, uh, healthcare, uh, professionals across the Navajo area. Um, tribal and urban, um, Indian health system, um, the ability to fulfill our mission, um, requires the best healthcare providers, um, frontline staff, healthcare, uh, administrators and, and leaders. And, and I just want to thank the Navajo Nation that are ma- that make, um, accomplishing our mission possible. Um, everyone plays a, a critical role in our success and on behalf of Ms. So and Captain Johnson, uh, we thank um, each and every one of you for your hard work and dedication to our patients. Um, and, and again, uh, thank you for all for working together to ensure, uh, the protection of our communities, um, during this ongoing pandemic. Um, and again, please stay safe and continue to take responsible action, um, to stop the spread of, of, of COVID nineteen. And with that, Chairman So, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Marquis Yazi. Thank you, um, um, summarized it very well about our gratitude to all the healthcare organizations and the, um, IHSS facilities, the personnel, the unwavering, uh, duty that you've all, um, accomplished. Hello, committee, um, let me first establish a motion and a second. To accept a report.
Second, Wanika.
Who made the motion?
Paul Begay.
Paul Begay, okay, okay. Honorable Paul Begay makes the motion. Honorable Edison Waik Wanika, uh, it's, uh, seconds the motion. Um, for all the folks, uh, on the call, please, uh, provide, um, a one-page, um, presentation of what, uh, we've talked about, what you've presented to the committee. The reason I'm asking for that is, uh, the state of New Mexico, uh, the state legislature will be, uh, convening on, um, January eighteenth. So far, there are several bills that have been prefiled. And one of, uh, and, and I think there's two in the House and three in the Senate. That basically, uh, gives, uh, opportunities for students to pursue, um, uh, e- either nursing or teachers. And and because of the Navajo Nation going into three states, um, students from Arizona and Utah that pursue, um, post-secondary degrees in, uh, New Mexico institutions are considered in-state. And I feel like will, uh, they will have eligibility to also qualify for the scholarships, uh. And what I realize is, and I see a trend, it's like, uh, accountants and bookkeepers, their children take business administration, they acquire MBAs. I know that some of the health, healthcare providers, uh, their children also pursue healthcare professions in many cases. And so, um, in that aspect, um, your children will probably also, um, want to do that. I know in Ms. Waiko's, um, case, she did that. So, um, that, and, and what I'm, the reason I'm asking for all this information is I will be, um, having my LDA, um, he's focusing on the legislature. And he will provide written statements, um, to each of the committees that would address these bills. And it would make great, um, backup to the passage of these bills that would provide scholarships to healthcare providers, most especially, uh, nurses. And then they are also offering, um, higher salaries for school nurses. Much like what, uh, Marquis, uh, Mr. Yazi had, um, talked about with BIE. So those are some things that, that I think will, and again, as we move forward, uh, uh, if necessary, we will also hand over those, uh, um, facts and figures to our new Senator, uh, Ms. Teresa Hatatli and, um, our other, um, legis- legislative, uh, folks. And, and so in Arizona as well as, um, we, we could also use it in the Utah Legislature. So those are some things that, uh, I foresee going down the road. So if you would, uh, please, um, provide these, uh, much-needed information to our legislators, I rise in this, uh, and delete up the knowledge. I know for myself, I couldn't write as fast as, but, uh, some of the presenters, uh, um, um, gave to the committee. With that, committee members, any additional comments or requests?
Yes, Bolona.
Oh, Honorable Bolona, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, uh, Chair and committee members and all those on, on the line. Again, uh, 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 thank you for being on the line and, uh, just, Chair, I just wanted to, uh, express my, um, sincere gratitude to all the healthcare workers out there and, and thank them for all the hard work that they've been doing, uh, every day, uh, working under the, under the, under the, uh, uh, conditions that they had to be out there working. And I just want to thank them all for their dedication and hard work in, in continuing to, uh, uh, run our healthcare systems and care, caring for the, uh, people of the Navajo Nation. Uh, I just want to express my sincere gratitude to all you, uh, that are working in the health profession, uh, and for doing a, a good job and, uh, you know, we, uh, it's not every day that you get to, uh, get thanked by anybody, but I know, uh, uh, it's a hard job and it costs the nation. Doctors and nurses have been, uh, been getting, uh, uh, downward, uh, talked down by other public people. I just want to say thank you all and for the, all you healthcare workers to, uh, uh, continue to keep doing a good job and, and, uh, uh, and, uh, working on try to eradicate this, uh, virus. Or the best we could do is probably suppress. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yeah, la, and sago, and ashon, or, and, uh, keep up the good work. Chairman.
Hago she la, thank you. Um, committee members, any other, um, comments?
Uh, Joe, get the guest.
Oh, Sachee. I was counting on you to talk on behalf of the committee. Thank you. You have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Sachee, uh, although, uh, me, uh, Hesse committee members, yeah, although all the reports that came in today really, uh, informative. Um, you know, we get a lot of, uh, uh, information from the communities, sometimes during, uh, during our meetings, uh, sometimes we get texts, text messages during our meetings, uh, as, as in the case for me, uh, this morning, kainisht, texta illa, halitigo, eh, uh, 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 Hesse committee, da, saha, ta'od, uh, yitno, in, ta'ani go. In this case, uh, uh, a school, a school where, uh, we know that the, the COVID situation, the Omicron situation is, is very, uh, rampant right now. I, I see, tskinko, ye, go, ye, go, do, tskinko, na, ni, ha, ni, go, the, negida, it's. So, uh, in some cases where school workers, employees, teachers, kuda, eh, he, da, da, hot, eh, go, bish, ja, go. They had contact with that. Uh, this, uh, this end of community member is asking, uh, or the, the, the community member knows that the principle is, uh, directing the person that has con- has contact with the virus to return to work after, uh, after they have, uh, quarantined or kept separated for five days, uh, required to return back to work. Akut, eh, go, da, na haza, ah, aku, eh, de, do, nklilia, da, at, eh, da, da, ni, go, hot, eh, go, da, uh, di, text message, da, at, eh, eh. Aku, that, uh, staff member, dan, len, ki, da, ta'ba hazan, go, uh, uh, be, yet, eh, ya, bich, na, hot, eh, tal, khosto, uh, beni, beni, yo, liki, da, be, bich, na, hot, eh. Ah, do, siti, tini, is, siti, tini. Da, ni, go, hot, ah, ati, da, uh, betra, ne, skig, go, uh, do, sim, tans, gi, ati, be, hol, long, go, ta, ba, they're required to come back to work. Eh, ko, eh, la, ha, ta'od, na, hada, da, no, in, go, da, ni, go, so, so, this one of the, uh, text messages that wa- that I received this morning. Eh, la, hey, eh, go, eh, at, ni, in, go, halit, eh, go, eh, uh, way, health department, that, da, saha, ta'od, sa, di, eh, la, to these schools on the reservation, uh, to, to make sure that, uh, these things are not happening. Ati, da, ne, bat, ha, ati, employee, ati, bat, tra, ne, skig, go, they're being directed to return to work. They're being directed to return to work. Although, uh, you know, every now and then we have, uh, red flags that come up on, on these communities. Very high numbers. On the way, um, uh, uh, I believe there's a press release that comes out every now and then that lists these chapters with high numbers. Uh, this community member is telling me that their community is like that. They're in the high numbers. Or so, uh, um, a more, uh, careful way of, uh, bringing the staff members, teachers back to work should be looked at. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Sachee. Uh, again, uh, I guess that the main thing is we're dealing with several different organizations. And I feel like we, uh, in a lot of ways, will, uh, recommend that, uh, they do work with their personnel. Uh, any other thoughts? Okay, so, uh, going forward, um, committee members, uh, Mr. Moes. No call vote on accepting the report.
All right, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Senator Paul Begay votes Green. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes Green. Honorable Pernell Holona.
Honorable votes Green.
Honorable Pernell Holona votes Green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes Green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison Dea Wanika.
Green.
Honorable Edison Dea Wanika votes Green. Honorable Charlene So. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Moes. Let the record show a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, and the chair not voting. To all our healthcare organizations and, uh, IHS, uh, personnel, thank you for being on the call. Think we got a good, uh, overall view of what we're facing.
Chair So, Don Gettigay.
Oh. Uh, Sachee, go ahead.
Uh, I thank you again, uh, Chair, members of the committee. Uh, just, just a reminder, uh, this Congo. Thank you.
Honorable Sheila Sachee. So, so, uh, committee members, I know that, uh, um, let's see, Honorable Holona, Honorable Begay are on the State Task Force. And I think Honorable, uh, Charlene So is also.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So you'll be calling in from down there even though you're among, um, other leaders?
Sir, I think I'll have time to be listening in and calling in during, in between the festivities that are happening.
Okay.
I plan to do, that's what I plan to do right now.
Yes, sir, this is Wanika.
Oh, so let's go ahead.
I really appreciate, uh, Don Gettigay, um, providing that information, uh, because I'm gonna be going down there too. I've been, uh, working with our, our Senator and our Legislature in reference to some funding that I've been pursuing for, uh, St. Michael Chapter and also Oak Springs. But so in so, it's unfortunate, sometimes we have two meetings on that same day because you have to end up with those legislators. Take some time. I wish we didn't have a meeting tomorrow, but, uh, I guess we just have to call in and, uh, do what we usually do. I, I, I'm hoping that we could plan on this so that, uh, uh, if, uh, majority of the committee members are going, go, uh, to rearrange our meetings so that it don't conflict. It is, I'll be at this instance, and Chair, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do our best. Um, with that, the we are now see. We will go to five B, the update on the Shanto Preparatory School. Um, Ms., uh, Angelita Benali, could you lead us in, up into that agenda item?
Mr. Chair and members of the, um, Health Education Human Services Committee. Number five B on the agenda is an update from, by the Shanto Preparatory School. And it's regarding the Shanto Preparatory School operations. And the presenter is, um, Ms. Melanie Dewakuku, the interim Superintendent for Shanto Preparatory School. And also available for the presentation are, uh, Mr. Derek Franklin, uh, Ms. Linda Levita Maestas. And I'm not sure if Dr. um, Harold Begay might be on the, on the call as well from Doty. Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Benali. Ms. Dewakuku, are you on the call?
Yes, I am.
Uh, you have teleconference call.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, uh, Mr. Franklin.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, uh. Before, uh, uh, Mr. Dewakuku presents, I just wanted to provide, uh, the latest results, uh, regarding reauthorization, um, before Mr. Dewakuku presents. Is, would that be acceptable, Mr. Chair?
Right, certainly.
Thank you, sir. Uh, she, Derek Franklin and she, uh, Kiaani Shona Kaidenabashisheen Twititini, eight is a chain on it. Uh, I just wanted to provide an update in regards to the, uh, current, the most current reauthorization that took place for Shanto Preparatory School that took place on, uh, this past Friday, uh, where they were reauthorized for three months. And, uh, the primary reason why they were reauthorized for three months is the Navajo Nation Board of Education's concern, uh, due to, um, the, uh, vacant position in their business office. Uh, they, they are currently advertising for a business, um, business tech. Uh, but they also are working with a outside consultant to handle their, their financials. Uh, so the board, the Navajo Nation Board of Education was concerned with, uh, their finances, uh, as stipulated in their audit, uh, to ensure that they are following their, um, their corrective action plan, uh, regarding their audit. So, uh, they will be up for reauthorization again on April, on Friday, excuse me, on Thursday, April seventh. So that is the update for reauthorization, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Ms. Dewakuku. You have the floor.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Um, Honorable, um, Chairman, Mr. So and Hesse Vice President. Mister, um, I'm sorry, Mister. I wrote down the names here now. I can't seem to find out the rest of the Hesse Committee. Um, am I able to share my screen?
Um, yes, you are.
Okay. Um, I do have a presentation here. I know, um, it was emailed out. I'm not sure if, um, you all received the, um, presentation. But here is, um, my presentation on Shanto's, um, update. Okay, here's update for January eleventh. Um, myself, um, Mrs. Melanie Dewakuku is presenting, um, the update. Um, we do have our school board members, Mr. Tom Franklin and Mrs. Martha Tate-Chi. Um, currently, we do have, um, Mr. Matthew So that has been appointed to, um, Shanto Preparatory School to serve as, um, um, appointed to the school board, to our school board to make it a quorum. Uh, myself, Mrs. Dewakuku, the superintendent, and we have Ms. Havilan. This is Marlita Havilan as our interim principal. We have Mr. Alroy Watson, our human resource technician. We have Mrs. Esther Bedoni, who is our acting business technician. Um, the communities that we represent are Shanto, Tonalea, Kaibito, and Inscription House. As mentioned earlier by Mr., um, Derek Franklin, um, one of the, um, concerns was our school was without a business technician. Just very recently, in November, our business technician that we did hire, she resigned. And so we do have, um, Mrs. Esther Bedoni, who has been appointed as our business technician. Our business technician position has been advertised. Um, we do have C.W. Payne, who is our consultant and provides us assistance on day-to-day basis. So, um, here is a sample of our, our job announcement in the, um, local newspaper. Um, going back to board member information, um, during the last school year, we had two board members that resigned. They were both being, were both, were being represented by the Shanto Community. Um, Shanto, the Shanto Community Governments have been asked to provide a replacement. So far, um, no replacement has been, no one has been appointed yet. The last that we received a couple of weeks ago was a posting from Shanto Community Govern- Governance asking for an extension, um, as in regards to, um, selecting a board member. Um, board trainings, um, part of the, um, corrective action plan. Um, board, there were several board trainings that needed to occur. These were, um, on October fifth, two thousand twenty-one. These are the, um, board trainings that our board members have had, taking control of your meetings using Robert rules, difficult board or chair or member. Get what you want using motions, great school board meetings and meeting minutes and the role of the clerk. Um, continuing on with board members' trainings, on October sixth, we had introduction to social emotional learning, um, sexual harassment, bullying intimidation, chain of command, con- code of conduct, ethics and rules, and board comments. Going on November, October seventh, two thousand twenty-one, we did have again, um, a reauthorization meeting at that time. It was a presentation on pool testing, um, presentation on our housing project at Shanto Prep and our housing resolution. Continuing on with board member training, October eighth, we did review our personnel policy. We did review, have a budget review that was completed by our, um, at that time, business technician. And we also were taking a look at our, um, SPS staffing, um, looking at the planning and the planning stages. Um, again, on November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, um, board members' training on criminal background, criminal activities invol- involving grants, contracts, et cetera, penalties off. Also, number three, all funds received must be deposited in accounts that are sure, that are insured by an agency. Um, the OMB Circular, the Indian Child Protection and Family Protection Act of nineteen ninety and School Board Code of Ethics. Just recently, we did, um, finish reviewing our personnel policy. It did take us about three days to go through it thoroughly, um, before it will be going to our board again for approval with all the revisions made to it. We, on, on December twenty-ninth, we did go thoroughly again with our financial policies and we, um, we did review the whole policy. Just, um, to let the, um, committee know, our financial policy and our personnel policy, um, handbook has not been reviewed by the board or any of the administrators since two thousand eighteen. So that's several years, and so that's the reason why we've spent so much time on these two policies. And also it is a policy that's outlined in our corrective action plan. So within these couple of days, we were having to update, take all language out of the, um, the different policies. So it's been, it's been a lot of work. Just recently, um, again, January eighth, we did go over financial policies and procedures, and we reviewed our housing policy. So those are the different policies that we have gone through page by page, word by word. And it include the board members and the Shanto Prep administrators. Moving on during, um, going back to the CAP or District Orientation in July, which involved all our departments, K-eight residential food service, high school support staff and administration. We all met for District Orientation. During District Orientation, it was supposed to be one day. However, we went into almost two and a half days. We did go in word for word. What was read was the reopening plan, the emergency operation, the COOP plan. Um, the HR office shared some information from their office on the upcoming school year and the business office. We have, we do use, um, frontline as our, um, attendance time and attendance. So, again, the reopening plan, emergency operation, COOP plan was an area in our CAP. So that, like I said, was read word for word to our district staff. Budget overview, we did have a budget overview with our staff in November. And we met by departments, by K-eight residential food, again, food service, high school. Support Services Administration, we had a budget overview presented by our business technician. We also had our HR technician present on professional conduct. So here is a copy of the agenda, we did meet with the different departments on different days. We did not meet with all departments on one day. So in the budget overview, we went through how the school receives funding. Um, how much it is per child, um, looking at our future budget, we did share the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, funds on that presentation, we also shared the ESA for the, the high school. Um, again, professional conduct was also reviewed with our staff in the month of November. Here is the corrective action plan, the template for findings one. If you see here at the end, it has, um, target completion date. Um, it is marked off for finding one. All here for one through four has the date that it was completed. The month that it was completed, as far as the, um, training. Finding two, um, the only section that I see here that is ongoing because it's something that's done almost every day or bi-weeklies to Biden enforce the Shanto Preparatory Personnel Policies and Procedures, so that's something that's ongoing. Right now, what's in progress, which is going to happen. Um, within probably the next month, once we get the finalized, um, personnel policies. Um, approved by our board, we will be meeting by department as we did before in presenting the information. Um, so housing, we just looked at our housing policy with the board and the administrators. So once those are finalized by our board, they will be presented out to our staff. Finding four, um, has to do mainly with our reopening plan, um, CDC guidelines. Um, when implementation of our reopening plan, a lot of this has happened prior, just before COVID. Um, just to go off a little bit more here on this section as far as CDC guidelines and following our protocols, um, we are on total remote learning for this weekend. Next week, we have, just as shared earlier in the different presentations, there has been an increase in our cases at the school, we do currently have about 12 teachers that have tested positive. We do have about eight, eight students that have tested positive. And we still have a handful of teachers and, um, students that are still awaiting their results. So we have chose to go remote for, um, the rest of this weekend, next week. Um, finding five, um, so that's appointment of interim. Back, back when this was presented to us, those are the dates where there was an acting that was appointed to those positions, and right now, we do have an acting again that was appointed in December of 2021. Um, right here on finding six, um, we are in the, again, in the process of finalizing our personnel policies. The board did complete all their, um, training, some, the staff did complete theirs, um, in regards to sexual harassment training, right here, we're still in the procurement process as far as getting someone in to, um, present an ongoing type of series on creating harmony in the workplace and social emotional training. We have it as a series versus just the one-time presentation. Um, we're going to make these trainings meaning, meaningful, then it needs to occur more and more often than just a one-time shock. Um, other than that, that completes my update on the Shanto Prep, um, operations. Um, if there are any questions or comments.
Thank you. Miss, uh, Dewakaku. Oh, committee members. Any questions?
But delegate Paul Begay.
Oh, Sir Chair, Honorable Paul Begay.
Uh, thank you, uh, Chair, members of the committee. Thank you, Ms. Mrs. Dewakaku for your report. Um. The reauthorization. Resolution, has that been? Uh, presented before the Shanto chapter, or is that the correct process? Is it, is it supposed to be presented before the chapter? Uh, for approval? Uh, that's, that would be my question. So. Yes, that's the only question I have, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I can answer part of that question?
Okay, uh, I think it's the responsibility, uh, Mr. Franklin, hold off. It's the responsibility of Shanto. Um. Who? Present, uh, uh, Ms. Dewakaku, please answer the question.
Um, it has been on Shanto, um, chapter's agenda for the month of Jul- January, however, at the planning meeting, there was a motion to move the resolution to February. So to my understanding, the resolution is being moved to the February, um, chapter meeting.
Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Chair, um, and members of the Health, Education, Human Services Committee. And if, uh, if I, if I may add, the reauthorization resolution uh, that was entertained this past Friday, uh, is going to be generated and given to, um, Mr. Dewakaku, as well as, uh, Tom Franklin and, um, Martha Tate, for them to, uh, present at their next chapter meetings, uh, once they get on the agenda. So the, the, because the reauthorization just took place this past Friday, uh, we are waiting for the final uh, resolution for, for distribution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin, I guess, uh, Ms. Dewakaku. Uh. Way I, um. Honorable Paul Begay, do you wish to do follow-up?
I believe, uh, uh, Chair, I believe, uh, Honorable Delegate Juanika will add on to it, thank you.
Chair.
Thank you, Hon- oh, Satella, go ahead.
First of all, I wanted to find out if, uh, this reauthorization, there was one that was done for three months. One that was three months, was there involvement by the chapters, or was that just, uh, based on the Board of Education and, um, uh, the Shanto Prep? Uh, the reason why I'm saying this, because there's supposed to be, uh, uh, resolution passed by the chapters before any reauthorization, that's, I'm just a little bit concerned about that. And, uh, if this was for the three months reauthorization, how come we're doing things, uh, after the fact? That, that the three months reauthorization was put in place, kind of don't make sense, and it looks like we're doing things backwards. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I can answer that question?
Uh, go ahead.
Thank you again, thank you again, Mr. Chair and members of the Health, Education, Human Services Committee. So this, this current reauthorization that took place this past Friday, that's still within this, the fiscal year 2021, 2022, for this, basically this fiscal year and school year. So the result, the supporting chapter resolutions that were presented within their reauthorization application packet. That continues for the remainder of this fiscal year. Uh, so that's, that's why they're, they're still using the current, uh, chapter resolution for, uh, reauthorization. Now, as explained to Shanto, they are going to submit a brand-new uh, reauthorization application in March, on March 21st. That's where the new, brand-new resolutions, supporting resolutions from each of the chapters that represent the school will be a part of that application. So, uh, and that's what Ms. Dewakaku was explaining, was that they're, they're on the planning meeting to obtain those brand-new resolutions, because as you recall, uh, the Hesse Committee, as well as the nomination board of education approved, um, the application content. Uh, which provided additional language, that every time a school comes up for reauthorization, they will provide a new chapter resolution. So because we're still in this fiscal year, and the nomination board of education wants to continue to monitor the school, we're still using that existing resolution, but in March, they'll be submitting a brand-new one. I hope that explains that, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the committee.
Okay, I guess, uh. Mr. Franklin, legislation, resolution, the action that the Board of Education approved on Friday. Did that have chapter resolutions supporting the reauthorization? I think that's the, what, uh, Honorable Paul Begay was, uh, questioning.
The, the answer, Mr. Chair, is yes, uh, because we're, we're still in the fiscal year of in which the application was submitted. So the Shanto submitted their application for reauthorization in March of 2021, which contained the current, the most current chapter resolution at that time. So for this reauthorization, it's sort of like a continuance of the previous reauthorization to ensure that the school is, um, meeting the conditions that were placed on the school. So that's why we use the, uh, current, uh, supporting resolutions for their reauthorization. Mr. Chair.
I was on mute. Good for speech, uh, committee members, at this time, I'd like to, um, open the floor to, um, the Shanto chapter, um, president. And chapter governing board representatives chime in to the discussion. Mr. Yazi. You wish to address the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Oh. Go ahead.
Yeah. I don't be kidding. As you mentioned, my name is Stanley Yazi, uh. Um. However, let me go ahead and introduce myself formally, as it is a tradition. For purpose of introduction. Um, Mr. Chair and honorable member of the Hess Committee, that's on the report. That was just presented. Uh. I want to be blunt and come to the point about the, the report that was given. Um, the concern that the community staff at school had is still, is still there, they are still there. Uh, periodically, even after the visit by Hesse, the, the committee and also Dodi. The concerns are still there. Um, I don't really know at this point how those comments, uh, issues and comments of, uh, lack of leadership will subside. Uh, I think only when, uh, another visit. Tation by Hesse Committee, my name was mentioned, that I was the person that brought the Hesse Committee to um, to the school. And I don't appreciate that, uh, by a board member. And furtherance to that, you know, the activities that haven't um, presented, which is of concerns to the staff, the community, the chapter uh, have all been um, investigated as you, some of you might already know. And most, if not all of those concerns were substantiated by the investigation. And out of that, you saw some corrective uh, supposed corrective action plan. I, I, I really think that anything viable to happen out of those work sessions that were held, that said, those sessions need to be held at the school site. Now, one of the concerns among uh, other many concerns in Vegas, while they had a board meeting room especially designated for them at the school, also in Page, Arizona. Now, added that today, I don't like. So I, I wanted to mention that. So all these meetings, work sessions, if it's going to be meaningful, should be done right there at the um, also the other concern that can, is brought, continually brought to my attention is the lack of leadership at the school. The absence of uh, uh, superintendent that most times she's down in Phoenix and pretty much uh, people, they designated other uh, school staff while she's, she's absent. The reports and also the uh, matter of retaliation. I am reported to that those are still happening. And then as a result, all these issues of concerns, there's uh, unhappiness, if you will, at the staff. Uh, some have already resigned and also uh, the enrollment has really declined is what I'm being told uh, by the staff. Of course, it's almost on a daily basis that I, that I hear this. The reason I'm saying this, I get these reports from the onset, as I had shared with the Hesse Committee, uh, this, most of the staff that contacted me to see if I could be spokesperson somewhat uh, to have the issue brought to the chapter to win uh, Dodi and also with the Hesse Committee. And I met with the council delegate, Mr. Herman Daniels, and he was very instrumental in the committee last time. A, a, I think uh, that's how I'm involved. A lot of these in uh, information things that happened that brought to my attention on a daily basis. A day, yeah. Uh, though the other one is of the two vacant positions, that is also that the matter of appointment was brought to the, to the chapter. When people were asked, including myself, if you will, to be appointed. It's a situation where uh, three board members serving and one opposing some of these things that are happening, that, that person would be outvoted as had been the situation with a previous board member that had resigned. Even with uh, uh, staff that had resigned and wanted to come back to work, they never were considered, they were not discussed, they were just taken off the, uh, junior library by the president. And I hear this uh, from, uh, I heard this from the one of the staff. So now, the appointment, if there's two, then I would, then others would appoint it, but not just one because the situation is out where two board members that are there have always uh, support each other and one board member that, that should be, uh, that might be appointed would have the same situation that they'll, that person would just be there. So that's one reason. And then with regards to re, reauthorization, um, the concern is all these things that are coming out, the concerns from the staff, from the community and why uh, get reauth, why should the school be reauthorized with those still there? There's, there's no uh, real correction, even with the assistance of Dodi. And then uh, there's some absentees that have been made, as I mentioned, of key people at school. All these things, um, the chapter has a concern. The other primary concern is the chapter has periodically invited the superintendent to provide a report to the chapter. That has not been done. I think to my rec, uh, to my uh, uh, recollection, she was the only one, the only time she appeared was when she was first uh, hired by the school. Since then, there has been none, no report. And the last report about a month ago was done by a staff person and representing her. So um, that's one of the concerns. And s, some of the leadership has been talking about maybe what needs to be done is have to uh, six thirty eight control. But as you know, the whole idea of uh, becoming one hundred two nine seven is to self-control. But sometimes this doesn't work very here's like, it's that like that with our school. Through the email and through the text message. I don't know what he reported about the pandemic that's out there, the preparation. But one of the concern is that, that, that was not done. And I just wanted to provide this, uh, it's still a concern there and I don't believe uh, there'll be a favorable support of the reauthorization uh, when that comes before the chapter. So, and I thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the Hess Committee. That's how I feel. So I appreciate that. Honorable Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yazi. Uh, anybody else from the chapter leadership want to address the committee?
Yeah, the Chair. Oh, yeah, eh. Oh, yeah, the Chair, uh, Shaya. Shanto Community Governance President. Roland Small Canyon. I should, uh, I'm gonna introduce it, yeah, eh, Stanley Yazi. Honorable Stanley Yazi. She, uh, the uh, not that she need to machine it, but she's seen though. that any of the Hesse Committee do that I should not only council delegate and also any that Paul begin though. Although those of you that, that are listening and uh, Shanto Prep School that and that should oh, yeah, eh. Yeah, we did uh, need, uh, I'm gonna, yeah, I was next to that, this Stanley Yazi. Uh, uh, yeah, I'm a snakey. The reauthorization resolution, eh, uh, in the planning meeting, we should agenda but caught in it. That uh, uh, there was a motion to put it on uh, February's agenda again. But uh, I need to create the scene. Shanto Prep School, the, the leadership, uh, this, the Wakaku do uh, I do not could it, I can not, I don't know, but it, no, and though though, I I lay a hand in the code. I report been yet, I'll let him do, 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 so the upper leadership, he does, I'm crazy, right? Oh, oh, yeah, eh, I know, yeah, the hell, and the bar is a good, good, and I'll change it, oh, employees and constituent uh, community members, give a hot eye, and he's not a hell, no. Though they don't know, eh, what, uh, uh, it's, uh, do uh, I read, uh, I, 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 I don't I don't, but it's a case of, I don't need to try, I'm better, hasn't, I don't know, uh, uh, you, you represent your communities, oh, on, on all one hundred ten chapters. Because although the administration that could all, we really, we really don't have that good communication with uh, with the school. So I thought could it, you know, eh, uh, uh, voluntarily, uh, then so eh, eh, even you had a, so, so, either. Although we don't get any reports like um, uh, I shouldn't bother, I'm just a school board meeting, but not, uh, uh, I do keep it, I don't need that, then I saw, had, had the, I don't, eh, yeah. Could it, could it, you know, eh, and I don't, I don't, I don't for all, oh, yeah, but I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't not only of course eh, the next month, in the resolution, though you get, you know, she would cut, or less than that. Uh, I don't need eh, eh, this, not only, uh, and here, 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 chapter, uh, certified governance. Of course, we have um, the three officials, oh, the four representatives, east, oh, south representatives, oh, west representatives, oh, north, eh. So yeah, and it yeah, so that case, oh, hey, uh, how do she, yeah, so that case, eh, 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 so so planning meeting, I don't know, I don't, council of not, I don't get, I don't, you regular chapter meeting. Eh, I don't, I don't, I don't although, here, I didn't need a left chair, though, Hesse Committee, I don't know, it's my time, I'm also, so Happy New Year and so, 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 I know though, I can't, I don't know, just do eh, I don't I don't, I don't although, with the not, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't although, here, I didn't need a left chair, thank you for the time. Thank you.
Oh, I guess he la to know us. Oh, she, yeah, uh, uh, from um, from what has been that was, yes, who is this?
Um, I'm sorry, you mentioned earlier, earlier the chapter leadership. My name is Darlene Pino and I'm called, I'm the Natsis on Never Mountain Chapter Vice President.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, oh, yeah, I don't know, so, uh, um, I take a morning or good afternoon, Mr. Small Ca, uh, Small Canyon. Um, Chapter President, Shanto Chapter President, although, uh, school, um, school members, school board members, called Nikki's job. Nikki's job, I thought, so, uh, someone needs to move their phone, I don't think I should, but uh,
uh, please
Should I continue? Phone number was last three digits, two, one, two, mute your phone, please.
Well, I think I don't get home yet.
Who's hosting the meeting? There we go. Thank you. Although I see our LDA, LC, Small, uh, Small Canyon. Although, yeah, eh, I don't know, so uh, could, yeah, I need, uh, Miss Melanie, our interim superintendent. Uh, the different um, community Shanto Prep School service area, it, it, uh, I can hear, yeah, Nazis on Never Mountain, I don't, I don't hit it, yeah, the um, I could, eh, in, could, on, uh, community members, and I'll change it, oh, yeah, I just, uh, okay. I call, we voice our concerns, so, could, our community members, uh, and um, I'll cry, I can't, so, uh, uh, be, be hard, it, uh, our leadership here. Uh, she's, in a, I'm sure, I'm not, so, uh, 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 I'm trying to keep um, updated uh, information on the, on Shanto Prep School. But I try to uh, continue to be participate in the school, uh, school board meetings too, or, or trying to, um, there, I, we know that there's a lot of challenges and a lot of issues and staff and um, uh, the board, the school board. It's very concerning, although the concerning portion of it is that uh, how we act, how we um, what we say, though, how we, our outlook in our positions. Um, how to, how should, so, it actually, uh, it, 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 um, how do I say it? Uh, it affects everyone, God. Um, I should know, I should, I said, when, since she didn't, the, the, um, however, be it, I will tell. Okay, it's not all, it's, it's really happening. Okay, the, could, on, he don't, Nazis, I'm talking, and the reauthorization can, you could, chapter meeting, uh, reschedule, eh, eh, yeah, of course, our chapter meeting, planning meeting, it can move to Thursday, uh, the thirteenth of this, this month, this coming Thursday. Of course, she, uh, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Tom Franklin submitted his resolution to us. We'll have him uh, on our planning meeting. Uh, could, and the resolution that we received is mentioned, um, there's a words, it says to have no ending, they, that's what the resolution is, is asking. Um, a quick, eh, uh, I should, so, I, yeah, they I call, last year, I, eh, uh, resolution, it, I think this, so, they want your reauthorization, about, eh, yeah. I thought, I can not, not this year, joke, I, they, I had, no, I should, so, go, Dodi, eh, eh, three months, and they get this, eh, cause this coming March, eh, eh, he, 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 not his, on here, um, resolution approved, Shanto's resolution approved, eh, eh, again, it is coming March, eh, 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 like Mr. uh, Derek Franklin, who had mentioned March, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't oh, she, she, I, 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 she, uh, could, eh, she, go, uh, the resolution of reauthorization, I hate that, in the, so, Shanto, Shanto Prep School. According to, uh, law, by, yeah, it, it, uh, I, I, I don't need, I don't need, so, uh, I, 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 community, uh, leadership, I don't need, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't need, I don't, 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 I, uh, I, should I, Darlene Pino, she, eh, do, I should, she, do, uh, she, she, muscular, I don't, she, she, gave, I should, she, I don't, 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 I, as a chapter vice president, um, uh, I'm, I'm always trying to keep myself up to date with all the latest information that um, that the community members, could, that, I didn't, I should, could, I, 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 I just wanted to make those comments and we, uh,
Brought up. I don't see that, Mr. Um. Mister, Mr. Yaasi, I honestly don't see that. And it's still happening, issues of unhappiness. I don't know. Where that is coming from? Some staff resigned. Some, um, yes, some staff did resign. Oh, they on need they left. They left. Um, their. In their resignation letters. It doesn't say there, that does not say they're unhappy. It states that they're moving on to. Another job. They're moving out of state. Their family issues, it double car. It doesn't save they're being happy and all this. I'm being honest with you. Um, student enrollment had a decline. A on Neo, we lost about one hundred students in Shanto Preparatory School. And I've heard staff themselves on the I like eight at the and then I've heard it. I've heard staff saying, if you're not. If you're not happy with my teaching here, take your grandchild out, take your student out. He ate at what you know, I could do says on my, my grandchild. A cobit don't need. And I didn't run over there and retaliate it to that individual that was there. You know, the parents did the she object, the whole team. I'm just telling you what I know. Another staff resigned and was taken off the agenda by the president. Um, that, that case right there. The individual resigned. It was boarded proof. She left. The next month on that she was on the agenda again, wanting to be to resend that resolubler. Resend that on resignation. I said, take it off because. The individual resigned. If she wants to come back, she's gonna have to reapply. Is that correct? You have to start all over. She put or next, so I don't know where. You're getting that information. Well, I know where you're getting that information, but is she been not? That's just why I took it off because she had to reapply. And there is, um, student enrollment is declining. That also affects. Um, budget that comes in. So now we have to look at. The budget and staff. A odd and on that, you know, how many staff, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be hurting. We are gonna be hurting. That's, that's the truth. It's because I telling this. The students go to another school. Eh, ah, we it the, I, I've heard it. I'm serious. Though that. But, um, I wanna thank the superintendent for taking the time to. Make that report to the Hesse Committee. Um. I need the, um. When this board member resigned, the other thing that was brought up was I'm being outvoted. It was three, what, that's a four and that it came down to three and. This one saying that the board's being out, he was being outvoted. But is in his resignation letter. Did not state. He told us. Verbally was that he has a full plate. He was going back to school. He's stepping down from the board. And he's also serving at Kaya T school district as a board member. And Nana Hesid, I mean, Nagza, Jodota, Sita. He wanted to be the superintendent over there. So. That's why he has a full plate and that's why he stepped down. And has in his resignation letter, that's what it states. So I don't know where that's coming from. And, you know, we're waiting for an individual to come on board so we can work with. That individual from the Shanto chapter governance. So here, do here, thank you.
Thank you. Any members? Does, does any, uh? Anyone have any input? Questions or comments?
Chair, this is Darlene again.
Yes, go ahead. Pino.
Thank you. I, um. I'm just curious, the school board members, Lenicky, I know that there was a vacant from Shonto. Um. So let's see, school board is. Mrs. Tate out of. I guess inscription. And then Shanto is vacant and then Mr. Tom out of Capito. Is there one from Nazis on? Thank you. That's my question.
Oh, I'll respond to that. Um. Thank you, Miss, Miss Pino. Um, no, there's nothing, not from I'm not just on. Um. Mister Martha, she, um. Is not my top such api can shake it be told or tonalia. And the vacant spot is from, um. Uh, Shanto. But, um. We do have students from. All, all areas that, you know, we have to go out there and, you know, we do have students from your. Community, so we have to go over there to. Get the reauthorization from you guys just to. A D up, but there's not, not the double cut from Navajo Mountain. Thank you.
Maybe members, anybody else?
Okay. Mr. President. Yes, this is Chair. Uh, Stanley Yaasi.
Oh.
Yeah, nine, I just wanna make. But I think again. The matter of Shanto Preparatory School on their agenda. Hey, hey. Um, my position for the with the chapter is we have four pointies. Uh, from the north, east, south and west, and I represent these southern part of the chapter. Based on the FMS, uh, council of not, uh, so let's stay well layout. That's what we operate on. So that's where I'm coming from. Uh, the other thing, that's in addition to that is. All these complaints. Uh, are coming from. The school and staff. Have come in some community member, it's directly coming from me. I'm just sort of like, I can't do it for the, uh, those, uh, issues that says that brought to my attention. It is, I could, it all this. I don't, um. Again, uh. It was, uh. A privilege for me to come before. Before, but be, uh. Make a presentation to the board. Against. I don't, and the. I should said, oh, need to attend the ship, but. In between the school and the staff and the community. Eh, Ashvana, they. But they should find their own solution. I call eh, eh, could it all let go? Uh, I need, no, she said, don't need, oh, but. This has been going on for about almost two years now. And I think it's affecting everything at the school. And I agree with, um, um. Navajo Mountain, which is just adjacent to Shanto, they're not being represented that they should be. And Cabito is not, um. Shanto, uh, is all it also a result of the reapportionment of school board members. So I don't know when that will be coming up again, and I think. There needs to be some changes in that regards. Eh, they had all the, so here in here, they need to show us, I get to, uh. I don't tell everybody, have a new year and stay safe and be safe. Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair.
To Mr. Yaasi.
Chair. Tom Franklin again, can I say a few words, the last few words, so. Again.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes. Okay, uh, again, Nana, yeah, and thank you, um, thank you to, I just wanted. The, all the people that made presentations, uh, that spoke today on behalf of Shanto Preparatory School, though, um. The chapter leadership down in the chapter, Mr. Yaasi, yeah, no, no. Mister, uh. Miss Gray and Miss Pino, I do appreciate. Um, you guys coming on the line and. Speaking to students and the community, okay, no, we all need to. I need the Mr. Um, Yaasi, we all need to work together. Don't need, oh, that, you know, it's just that, you know, there's things that are called, uh, chain of. So that's part of the, um. The reason procedure of personnel that needs to be revisited also. He on data, um. Former board members, they, you know, if we. Use that, you know, that would, that would work, but then again. It's gonna turn around saying retaliation. There's no win-win situation. Use that. Uh, call retaliation now, you know, you know, that's, that's. Gonna work. I know, I need Cabito and, um. You are right, that Navajo Mountain shit. From there, but it, it lies in the hands of the elections, um, with their reapportionment of board members, so. So, oh, Aliago with Cabito and Tonaliya being added to Shanto Preparatory School. And that's how I ran for the board to, to serve on Shanto Prep, so. Until that changes and the new election takes place. That's when. I'll be serving for Shanto Prep, so thank you. You guys have a good day.
Any members? Any further discussion?
Uh, Miss Benali, Miss Angelica Benali, have I established a motion in a second? To accept the report?
Nope.
Carry the letter, not yet.
On motion, sure. Oh, yeah, Lance, it's silly, Honorable. His Chair Carl Slater makes the motion to accept the report. Do I hear a second?
Second Delegate Paul Begay.
Yeah, last a chair, Honorable Paul Begay seconds the motion to accept the report. Before I take it to a vote, uh. In communication. With, uh, the newly, uh. Confirmed, uh, Superintendent Dr. Harold Begay. Uh, has expressed, uh, a willingness to meet with the Shanta. Preparatory school board. And administration and chapter leadership. As he divulged to the council, he. He did, uh, relay that he was. Part of the group that pursued the, um. One hundred two ninety-seven, um. Grant school designation as well as the charter high school. As well as, uh, the. Other aspects of the operation of Shanta Preparatory School. So we will, um, and it would be up to him to schedule that visit and. To address the. The whole organization. Um. What does trouble me is. Mr. Franklin, you divulge that a teacher told. A parent, you don't like. Way I'm teaching, take your students out of the school. That for me is not. A good characteristic of a. School organization. Does that divulge how? School administration, school organization conducts themselves. And if it's acceptable to the superintendent, then. That certainly gives a clue to. Um. How. Who organization thinks they can control. Parents. That's not a good characteristic. And it's the board and the administration accepts that type of. Response to a parent. Then it's no wonder that. The enrollment has dropped by one hundred students. I hope the thinking. Changes going forward. Because. Public law. One hundred two ninety-seven. Is. A traditionally designated. Organization. That should enhance. The education of. Community students where that grant school operates. Mr. Franklin, I hope that, uh. My view. Um, has effect on what is acceptable. They want to keep. Uh. The same goes.
Uh, Mr. So, Mr. So, this is Tom. After, uh, can I speak? If I may.
No.
I just want. To say.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes. Okay.
You've had the opportunity. There's a motion in a second for this committee.
Okay.
Going forward. And I'm not about to debate my. My comments.
Well, be quiet and do your motion.
Thank you, uh, for the other, uh, painted gallery type of comments. Um. In, and going forward, as I stated. Um. We will continue to. Monitor and keep focus on the operation of. The Shanto Preparatory School. Um, again. Um. We are concerned. Very concerned. And so we, we will await, um. Superintendent, uh, the day's visit. And see how. He recommends going forward. The administration and the board should be concerned. As concerned as the chapter is concerned because. The reauthorization. Process. Parents in the community should be concerned that the reauthorization only goes ninety days at a time. Where in past practices. And the usual manner is to be reauthorized. For three years. So that should basically indicate to the chapters. And the parents and the community members. That there is. Some very concerning. Items. Uh, remain unresolved. So, um. Let's not make light of the fact that there are community members that are concerned. They see. It was a well-run organization, then reauthorization would go. Three years at a clip. So. In that respect. Uh. It should not. Concern. Who brought? Issue to the board, to the Hess Committee. That should concern everybody is the fact that. There is a problem. And how do we get? To the solutions. The solution so that reauthorization could go to three years. So with that, that would be my statement as we go forward, committee members. Any further comment? Discussion? If not, Mr. Mo's. Will call vote, please. Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
That would be Paul Begay looks green.
Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona. Honorable Red. Honorable Red. Honorable Pernell Halona votes red. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison J. Unika. Honorable Edison J. Unika. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
I vote red.
Unika votes green.
Okay, Honorable Edison J. Unika votes green. Honorable Charlene So votes red. Dare vote of three in favor, two oppose.
Thank you.
Hello, I see you walking by my office. What's going on?
Please. Thank you, uh, committee members. Let the record show a vote of three in favor, two oppose. And the chair not voting.
And then.
So, uh. Thank you. Let's go on to. Miss, uh, Angelica Benali, uh, can you guide the committee to item? Five C.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee, they see is a report and update. By the Navajo Nation Division of Social Services, and it's regarding the status of COVID-related burial assistance. Uh. Second bullet point is the update on funding distribution to domestic violence shelters. And C. Is indicated a, an update on negotiation on meals and transportation rates for senior citizen centers. And the last item actually is, um, should be under the Department of, um, Health. And I, I believe that Ms. Valerie Jones did send an email regarding, uh, in- information on that, that it's a. Um, the rates are determined by the state of Arizona and that they don't negotiate. You know, the, the, uh, meals or transportation rates. But the presenters are gonna be, uh. Executive Director Dieta Neswood Gishy, who did send an email indicating she was gonna be at another meeting today. And however, also, um, the presenters will be, uh, Marlinda Littleman. Mr. Chair.
Yes. So, uh, you called up the. Uh, folks to present, uh. Miss Rosen, the gay, Miss Littleman. Are they on the call?
Um, I believe so, and I, um, Ms. Yaasi did send a, a report. And it was, um, also, the committee members were also included on that email. And then I think it was Ms. Rosen, Be Gay. Also sent another report regarding the report on COVID nineteen burial assistance. And the report from the Department of Family Services were the, um. Distribution of funds, um, to the various, um, domestic violence shelter on and off the reservation, Mr. Chair.
Okay, who's gonna present? Uh, Ms. Littleman, Ms. Begay, Ms. Yaasi, are you on the call?
Uh, good afternoon. Yes, um, this is Marlinda Littleman. I am on the call. And I will be, um. I will be presenting along with, um, two of our other team members.
Yes, you may go ahead.
Okay. Um. Thank you, um, Chair and members of the, um, Hess Committee. Um, good afternoon. Um, if I may, I would like to share my screen. And, uh, I think it'll be easier for me to, um. Present with, um. With a PowerPoint that I have here. So let me see if you're able to see my screen. I hope you're able to, um, see my screen.
Yeah, it's appearing.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um. So, um. As stated, um, Roslin did send a report. Um, earlier, and I believe all of you have received the report. And, um, I will do my best to provide an update on the COVID-19 burial assistance along with, um, Rayanne Metiba, the Program Manager for Navajo Family Assistant Services. Uh, do ya, uh, a, um, nashleni gi, e ma idish kisni, nashli do, tis ishna ba shis chin, tadi shkisni da shi che, ado, na kaidin e, da shin na li. Um, I know Ms. Neswick Gishy is, um, I see she is on the call, but she's, um, um, she's multitasking between several meetings. One of them is with the OPVP, the FRF meeting, and I know she's also, um, I think, um, putting some time to the Navajo Utah Commission meeting as well. So, um, I'll do a couple of comments and, um, like I said, Rayanne will also be assisting me here as well. So, um, just kind of to go back a little bit, um, as some of you probably know, I came on board in, in July of last year, so I'm still not keen on all the, um, some of the background information, but I'll do my best to provide some background information. So, specific to the COVID-19 burial, there were a couple of fundings that were, that were used. Um, general funds, there were some funds that were allocated through the Epidemiology Center. Uh, there was also some coordination with vital records. Um, I believe they received some CARES money, so some of that was used. And then, um, also, um, UUFB funds as well. So back in April of 2021, um, through this legislation, CMA fourteen dash twenty-one, there was an allocation of two, a little over two million. Um, some of that, those funds were, the funds were not all spent and they were returned. Um, we did meet with DOJ, um, earlier or later, the latter part of last year. Um, we were trying to see how we could revert, um, those funds to DSS because we still had, um, some COVID-19, um, burial applications that needed to be processed. But we were, um, advised that we needed a new legislation to request for new allocation. Um, so at that point in time, um, around November, uh, we did request it of, um, Honorable Delegate Winika to assist us in sponsoring a legislation. Um, but just recently, we also requested to withdraw this legislation. Um, mainly because there was an, um, a memo that came out from OPVP and, um, President was recommending a moratorium on the UUFB. And also, we did, um, issued a one-sixty-four review process. Um, and when it got to OMB, it was deemed insufficient. And through a memorandum, we were informed that those three, um, K accounts that I have listed there, there was still a balance of, um, two-point-nine and that, um, we were advised, um, to use those funds. However, um, those funds, they needed to be extended, so the one in, in black are, we did request for an extension up to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. So that's currently going through. The one, um, highlighted in red, um, that business unit ended uh, last year, I believe it was September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, also, OMB advised that, um, we could also use our, um, ARPA funding as well. So that was, um, our reason for withdrawing the legislation. Um, so then we, um, you know, we've been strategizing on different, various ways. Um, and that's when, um, around that time, the budgets were finalized and through the, um, CS dash forty-nine twenty-one, there were, uh, remaining operating balances in those three account numbers that I have listed there. Um, and we recommended to provide, use some of the remaining funds for COVID-19 burial. Um, and we had requested Delegate Halona to, um, assist us in sponsoring to amend this legislation. Um, and again, most recently, we requested to withdraw, um, this legislation. Um, so the, the, the way the, um, the CS four-nine-two-one, um, was passed, uh, we are moving forward with it. So the funds will remain with the domestic violence shelters, and that will be administered by Department of Family Services. And that report will be given after, um, we discuss the COVID-19 burial. So I won't go too much into that. Um, we have also used some of our own general funds. Um, and we used eighty-seven thousand five hundred, and those have all been depleted. And so currently, um, our Executive Director has also been coordinating with other division. And through the Division of Public Safety, um, they do have a COVID-19 response donation. They did repair, prepare a budget for six-point-seven million. And of that four million, um, is proposed for COVID-19, uh, burial. And the budget has been prepared by Public Sa- Division of Public Safety. It was approved by OPVP. And, um, I'm not exactly sure how the packet has been prepared or what it's called, so I'm just calling it packet. But the packet will need to be presented to, um, Budget and Finance Committee. And of course, once it's approved, then it goes to OMB for a business unit number. There is also another pot of money through the Department of Emergency Management. Um, at this time, my apologies, I don't know the amount. Um, we're still coordinating with Department of Emergency Management. Um, and the budget, um, to my understanding, has not been prepared yet. So that's my, um, my brief, um, presentation, just to give, um, an update and it, as far as all the specifics, um, I think those are in the, in the report. So I'll, um, I'll provide that much for now, and I'll turn it back over to you, um, uh, Chair, um, so, thank you.
Maybe members. Do you have any questions, comment? If not, then the Chair has question. Uh, Ms. Littleman, going forward, what funds are you securing? To continue the COVID-related burial assistant funding at a, I think it was at five thousand?
Um, I, the currently, I'll, I'll have Rayanne, um, talk about the current funding that's in place. Um, but for the, I guess, moving forward, we're seeking, um, funding with, through the Division of Public Safety and Emergency Management. Um, through public safety, it'll be four million, so that one is going through the process. Um, and I'm, like I mentioned, I'm not sure about the amount through the Department of Emergency Management, but we'll be working, um, with that, uh, division to secure additional funding. Um, I, I think Rayanne should be on call. Rayanne, um, may I call upon you to provide, um, the current, um, funding sources for COVID-19?
Marlinda, this is Rosalyn.
Rosalyn.
Mr. Chair. This is Rosalyn Begay. Shanae, may I, um, assist Mrs. Littleman on, on the response to your question? Shanae, I?
Yes, the days ago, hit.
Good afternoon, um, Honorable Chair, uh, Shanae, Mr. So, and members of the committee. As, um, Mrs. Li- Littleman had reported, um, the Division of Social Service has actually been allocated over six million dollars in the donation in the Department of Emergency Management. The donation it receive, and over six million is, has been allocated. And today, Chief of Staff Paulson Chaco has signed off on the budget forms. So it, those budget forms have already begun the one-sixty-four review process. And then it goes through, oh, OMB, OOC, and then, and then we need to get, um, a sponsor to get it going through the legislative process, and then it goes to Budget and Finance Committee. So we are, the division, um, is anticipating on those funds to support the COVID-19. Majority of that, those funding will pay for outstanding invoices that the division, um, is pending with the division. Because the funding, the COVID, or, or, the burial assistance funding that comes from BIA is very, um, restricted. And there's, um, like, yeah, the person make, shoot, uh, the person has had to be indigent, lived on the, uh, Navajo, or the federal Navajo Nation, and its service delivery designated area for the last six months. And has to have been, you know, had a CIB, all these restrictions to be eligible to receive that funding. So, there's some money available. That is restrict, that is, we will utilize whatever balance we have for that. Um, people who, uh, in decedents who qualify for that category. However, there are other Navajo decedents who live off the Navajo Nation, who, who made more money than who were not indigent. Who may live on the nation, but who were not indigent. But they need, the family need assistance. So that is where we are, uh, we are anticipating to use the six point. I don't, I don't have the exact number. Um, that, that is in the report that I sent out. Um, that will be utilized for that. So that is our contingency plan. Because the President, uh, had issued a memo to the Speaker indicating that a moratorium should be placed on the use, further use of the UUFB and the Sihasan Fund until the ARPA money is all used. So that is why, um, we latch on that, um, push for, or, or advancing the, uh, requests for money from UUFB to support COVID-19 burial assistance. So the, the paperwork is going through, and then we, we are very hopeful that it will get passed by BNF. Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Shanae, Chair.
Oh, Sittele, Honorable Carl Slater. Have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, the presenters, for the information. And I'd like to follow up on the issues, uh, with funding for Adabi, and I wanted to know where things are at there and what the division has done to do some introspection and figure out how they can expedite these processes, either internally within DSS, or what recommendations could be made for processing, uh, these grants through the Ops Management Budget and OOC. Because it just seems like we, we keep having this recurring issue, um, when we need to program new funding into these multi-year contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Honorable Slater. Uh, yes, that would be the second part of our, um, report. Before we move on, um, Mr. Chad Begay, or Chad Abada, I'm sorry, uh, Chad Abada. In this particular legislation, would, would the BNF be the final authority on, it sounds like a budget transfer rather than an appropriation?
Here. I think BNF has final authority just to transfer the money. But let me double-check with, uh, Laura Lean, she's in charge of BNF. I'll get back to you, Chair.
Of course, Shanae. Pending that, uh, committee members, uh, let's move on to the, uh, the grants that would go to domestic violence shelters. Um, previously, the committee had been given information that the allocations to the, um, domestic violence shelters and the budget, uh, requirements would be accomplished by December twenty-third. And that's the reason that, and, and we hadn't heard back if that had been accomplished, and that's the reason this particular item, uh, is back on the Hess agenda. But that, Ms. Littleman, if you are the Deputy Director, I'll go to you first, the floor, and, and you can designate who's gonna provide the update.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the Hess Committee. Um, yes, uh, we are prepared to provide this report this afternoon. Um, just, um, I will have Regina Yaasi provide an update. Uh, she's the Program Department Manager for Department of Family Services. Um, I don't have the exact date, but it was the latter part of December. Um, we did, um, get notice from OMB, um, with the dollar amount, and we were instructed to prepare the budget, so, um, I'll have Regina take it from there um, to, to provide the updates. Um, Regina?
Yes, good afternoon, um, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. This is Regina Yaasi. The, um, report that I had submitted this morning, or rather, this afternoon, um, I emailed that out, so, um, just, just an overview of, of the report is that, um, FY twenty-twenty-one general fund carryover was to provide additional funding to the domestic violence shelters in the amount of two million, three-hundred-twenty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars and eight cents. Um, the division received the memorandum from Mr. Dominic Bial, OMB Office of Management and Budget, um, on December twentieth. And instructions were in the memo to state that, um, the division needed to submit their budget to OMB, um, with a specific date, which we did, submitted the budget. which we did, submitted the budget on December 29, 2021. So the budget remains pending with OMB up to, as of today, to be inputted into the Division's account. The Division, Department of Family Services, we will, given that we do have current professional service contracts with seven shelters. I listed the shelters on the report with the proposed allocation amounts under the, the carryover funds. So you will notice there that what I wrote was, we will be coordinating with Office of Controller and Department of Justice in how best to move forward regarding the, the current contracts, which there are seven, and there are two, two new ones listed there with the asterix. Roberta's Place, we don't currently have a contract with them, and also the Gentle Ironhawk Shelter, on reservation shelters as well. So moving forward, those are coordination efforts that will be implemented. And the, the understanding here is how best do we get the funds out quickly so that shelters can begin expending their funds? What does that mean in terms of the current contracts? Or whether we need to amend the contracts moving forward? Or how will that work out? So those are some questions that we will be addressing as we move forward. So it is understood, we are on the timeline to expend the funds by the end of September. That is understood. And we have Gentle Ironhawk Shelter as one of the recipients, as a proposed, receiving the proposed allocation. So they are considered under on reservation TB shelters. That you'll see there in the report. You'll see the amount, total amount there for on reservation and total amount for off, on reservation as well. That's my report, Chair. Back to you. Thank you.
Okay, there's a bunch of background noise. Callers, go put their, yes, thank you. Okay, there's somebody else needs to put their phone on mute. Ms. Benali, could you, whoever has that device that they're talking on, could you put them on mute? Okay.
Chair So, she just said Chad Abada.
Oh, Sitche, Chad Abada, you have the floor.
Earlier, you posed the question if Budget and Finance was the final authority for budget trans, for that budget transfer. Can you tell me what account they're transferring from and to what account? Or?
Yes, let me quickly look for it here. Let me see.
Good afternoon, Chair. So this is Deanna Neswad Gishi. I'm able to respond.
Hi, this is Marlinda. Apologize. So the business unit number is in as a Nancy 01476. Thank you. Deanna?
Thank you, Marlinda. Good afternoon, members of the Health Education Human Services Committee. I was on another WABEX meeting. In regards to the COVID-19 burial assistance, we did have some meetings in early December regarding needing additional funding for nomination COVID-19 burial assistance. And at that time, in our, our group meetings, it was determined that under Department of Emergency Management, which is under Public Safety, they did get some donations. And so we would be, the budget had been signed by Chief, Chief of Staff Paulson Chaco. And so that's went through the process. So the, the Division of Social Services in the budget, on the budget form, budget form four, it does indicate under the social assistance in particular, the object code 8060, I'm sorry, 8055 burial assistance. It's for $4 million. The other funds would be going to other areas. And so we will not be administering these funds. They would still be under Department of Emergency Management. And we would just be taking the applications, preparing the request for direct payments, and then forward it over to Department of Emergency Management. And then they would be processing the payment. We did this similar with our other funding that we received. I heard my colleague earlier have talked about where we receive funds from the epidemiology funding. And so we, we did not have the funds under the Division of Social Services. We would coordinate with their accountant, similar to the funds that were for burial assistance utilized from the Office of Vital Records. We would give the documents to them, and they would process it. So this would be similar. So there's, there's not a need for a whole legislation to go through. It would just be where there is a budget revision request that has been signed, and we would just be coordinating and monitoring that balance of $4 million. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So it will, so you're, Ms. Neswad Gishi, you're telling us that it will not need legislation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, it was just going to be a budget revision, which has been signed. And so there's no, there's no transfer of funds. It will still remain with the Department of Emergency Management. Mr. Chair.
And, and that would be basically from carryover funding? Am I correct?
Mr. Chair, these are donation funds that was received with the Navajo Nation.
Is that with, what the Department of Justice was receiving and overseeing?
Mr. Chair, yes, these are COVID-19 response donations. And so it is, funds were received by Department of Justice. Some of these donations, they were, they were very noted on there, like if they were for a particular activity, or if they were specifically for a division or department. So those were a little bit more restrictive. So with this, how I had COVID-19 response donation, there is a process that when these funds came in, and it was identified to go to Department of Emergency Management, that initially had to go through the 164 review process. And so now that they're going to move funds from, let's say, from food items to burial assistance, and that's normally, that's where they just do a budget revision request. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Gishi. Meeting members? Okay. I guess the main thing is we will continue to monitor that particular aspect of. And, and Ms. Neswad Gishi, I don't, did you report the same to the council on Friday? My call dropped, and I couldn't get back on the call. But I didn't hear the, the end of the report.
Mr. Chair, members of the Health Education Human Services Committee. Yes, the information was provided that we would be seeking additional funding under Department of Emergency Management, and that, that's how we will continue to serve any, any Navajo person, regardless of income or residency. And so we have this process in place, and we have been providing this service since April 2021. And so, I'm sorry, April 2020. And so serving over 1,400 individuals, we have a process in place. And we will continue to, to do the same process once we're aware that the, the funds have been put into the burial assistant object code. And then we would be processing again the request for direct payment. So we can move those more quickly, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Now let's move back to the presentation on the funding to going, going to the domestic violence shelters. Honorable Carl Slater, did you have follow-up on what was presented? Committee members, any follow-up questions? Discussion?
Can you hear me?
Just now, Honorable Slater.
Okay. I'm having connection issues over here. Were you asking for questions on the burial assistance or on the allocations to the shelters?
I guess the main part was Ms. Neswad Gishi responded to the questions of whether it would require, the burial assistance transfers would require legislation. And then we moved back to the allocations to the domestic violence shelters.
Okay, and then with respect to the budget reallocations, is that going to require our approval? Or is that solely within Budget and Finance? Chair, could you, could you update me? Like I said, my internet gave up.
Oh, okay. Ms. Neswad Gishi, one more time, explain the rationale of why it doesn't need legislation?
Chair, that's all I needed to hear, though. It doesn't need legislation. I, I, I understand the concept now, but sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't. So can I ask a follow-up on this? The the assistance that is being provided, is that going to be done via direct deposit? Or is it physical checks being cut? Are they going to the mortuaries of the families choosing? I know you provided this update where you ended the contracts, and now you're much more responsive to those who need assistance based off of what their preferences are. And they can have some more leeway in the selection process and all of that, and I applaud you for that. But I, I just want to know, like mechanically, you know, we, we have issues with checks getting out the door from the controller's office, because there's just an overwhelming amount of work that needs to be done and not enough people to do it. So I, I want to know, you know, is there the potential for these checks to be delayed? If that's the method, or is it a different method for paying things out? So thank you, Chair, and thank you for indulging me based off my connectivity issues.
Thank you, Honorable Slater. Okay, Ms. Rosin Yasi. Please follow up on to reiterate the processes. To my understanding, you've basically determined how much are going to go to the shelters. Now, what the process calls for is a budget. Am I correct?
Mr. Chair, this is Deanna Neswad Gishi. I can provide a response. I think there's two different questions for clarifications.
Chair, I was asking about the, the burial assistance, not about the shelters.
Correct.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm multitasking at my end, too. Go ahead, Ms. Neswad Gishi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Health Education Committee. And thank you, Delegate Slater, for the question. So now that families have a choice and they're not limited to how they want to have their final services. Yes, we, we have been doing that with all of the Navajo Nation COVID-19 burial assistance, the over 1,400 individuals. There was no contracts utilizing those with that assistance. And so some of them, we had to do a request for direct payment. And once it gets to Division of Finance, if the, if the mortuary has an ACH file set up, it is sent to them directly, a direct deposit. So that's more the choice. They, they normally don't want to wait for a check, as you're correct, Delegate Slater. Sometimes the check process is going to take a little bit longer. So as we're moving forward, we do have our electronic case management database that we're hoping to get all of these payments entered into our database so we can do a batch processing where checks are automatically, or the ACH file is done the same day or the next day when it is uploaded into a data port. And then the, we do the, of course, just that clarification that there is funds availability, then they run the data port. So that is how we're planning to do moving forward. Again, we're having successful conversations with Office of the Controller to use the data port to make payment to vendors. That has not been done before. So we're, we're making positive progress so that we do not have families who are uncertain of whether families who are uncertain of whether assistance will be provided or mortuaries who are trying to wait for their full payment. So, we are moving forward successfully in that area. Thank you, Delegate Slater, for the question and Honorable Chair.
Okay. Committee members, does that conclude the discussion on burial assistance? Ms., Ms. Gishy, one more time. What is the level of assistance? Is that the new rate of 5,000?
Mr. Chair, members of the Health Education Human Services Committee. No, the, the amount that we have been providing for Navajo Nation COVID-19 burial assistance is up to 3,500. And so the families would be contacting the, the mortuary of their choice. And then whatever package that they choose or whatever type of services they choose, then we would be paying up to 3,500 for COVID-19 burial assistance.
And, okay, follow-up then. And if they choose something that is above 3,500, then is the Division of Social Services also helping the family members apply for the FEMA burial assistance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that follow-up question. So, with the FEMA funeral assistance reimbursement, because that's considered disaster assistance, the family has to directly apply on their behalf. And so, we, at times, they have requested for how much was paid by the nation and then how much they had paid out of pocket. So, that is an individual request that the family has to do. But we, we have been contacted to see if we could provide our decision notice that was sent to the mortuary. So then they know that they, they got assisted for that amount. And then whatever was remaining, then the family would work directly with FEMA for direct reimbursement in what they paid actual out of pocket. And it's not just for the actual funeral cost. It also entails if they had to purchase additional items. You know, depending if the family wanted specific clothing or whatnot. And so whatever was until that the family had to pay out of pocket for the COVID-19 funeral is where FEMA is doing reimbursement. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just asked that question so it'd be on public record and so that our listeners could also also have access to that information. Thank you. Honorable Slater, are you okay with moving on and the presentation by Ms. Rosalyn Yasi? Did that answer your questions on the grants to the domestic violence shelters?
On the domestic violence shelters, I, I appreciate the work that was done to follow through on the carryover amendment. And I think that it's going to help with when there's gaps in payments or invoices during these grant periods. So overall, I think it's going to be a net positive because, overall, it's going to be a net positive and I'm happy that, you know, you're pursuing this at this time. But second, you know, ADABI had to lay off staff because of the Navajo Nation. And I, I just think that that's unconscionable because of our, our processing process for these reimbursements. So, I, I want to update specific to them. And I want to know when or if the check has been cut to get them whole and back in business. Thank you.
And in concert with that question, there was, I think, some of the information the committee received was, there was unpaid invoices going back to October 1. And we were in December and those invoices hadn't been paid. So, um, that would be additional questions that the committee is seeking. Ms. Rosalyn Yasi? Or Regina Yasi, I'm sorry. Again, the, the result of multitasking.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, yes, this is Regina Yasi. I can answer those questions, yes. No to the first question about ADABI's check being issued because the, the budget is not yet established in the system by OMB. It remains pending over there. So, I stand corrected, I correct myself, I stand corrected when I sent the email, Mr. Delegate Slater, Honorable Slater, I sent you an email last week indicating that OMB had released the funds. I was reading an email, when I sent that email to you, I was reading an email from OMB on that particular day that stated that it was complete. That's how I responded. So, at that moment in time, I went with what I read in the email from OMB. And that's how I responded. However, I was corrected then on the 7th, January 7th, when I received an email that stated that it remains with OMB and the funds are not yet fully, the restriction to the budget was not lifted yet. So, I do stand corrected on that. It was my misunderstanding in reading that email from OMB. So, as of today, the budget items and documents remain with OMB. So with that said, the invoice reimbursement for the shelters have not been submitted for payout yet. The second question of, yes, the unpaid invoices go back to October 1. And so again, when the budget is set up in the system and is lifted in terms of, well, it is in the system, but once the restriction is lifted, then yes, the invoices receiving records will be submitted for payment. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, that's my response. Thank you.
Meeting members, follow-up?
Chair, this is Delegate Slater. Can I ask a follow-up?
You, you certainly can. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Shania, Chair. So, Ms. Yasi, can you explain like what some of the issues have been setting up the budget? I, I'm really struggling to understand why it's taking so long when I would assume it's a very similar process year to year. Can you provide some more explanation, please?
Thank you for that question, Honorable Slater. Yes, I will do my best. How I understand the process is that once the budget is developed, once we get the award notice, a budget is developed by the department. And that is then, it's first and foremost, it starts with OMB. And between OMB and our accountant here, there was some back and forth regarding some numbers discrepancies on how it was entered. Some corrections needed to be made. The IDC itself was also in question, indirect costs, IDC. Those were also needed corrections. So, what, the second, the second thing to that is what I was informed and how I understand this process was there was miscommunication between OMB and OOC. So, one is saying one thing about an IDC rate and the other is saying a different number. So, when the budget was set up, we went with the initial number of the initial IDC rate. It was submitted and approved by OMB. It went to OOC where they questioned it and said, this is the incorrect number. This is, it needs to be redone. And that's kind of how even further delays happen. Once they review it, it came back here to our department and it was amended again and sent back through. So, between OMB, OOC, there, in my opinion, there are just some things that are not clearly written out or clearly understood between the two departments. And when we're caught in the middle as a department, we're told one thing, but do it this way. And it's, we had to redo it again. So, and then it went over to DOJ for review. And then it came back and it went back to OMB for the, for the final setup. But along the way, at the end of December, that's when the, again, another correction was made. So, so I believe there's just, over the months, weeks that have passed, there were corrections and errors and the two departments, to my understanding, that's how I understand it, that there were different numbers being thrown out. So for those reasons, the delays of making the corrections to meet one department's requests and then being resubmitted. So, and then the other part to all of this was we got the award notice late from the funding source to begin with. So, that, that's kind of how it started the, the ball of getting things done late because the award letter came late rather than coming in early part of July, June, July. It was, it came to us, I believe it was until August, if I'm correct. So, I, when I gave you that, when I gave the committee the report, it's in there in terms of when we, we received the, the award letter and when we did the budgets and it went back and forth. So, I believe I, I, in my, in my chart that I completed, it's, it's there in terms of the timelines that we had to, that we went by. Uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Yasi. Vice Chair Slater, follow-up?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ms. Yasi. I guess I wanted a little bit more specificity along the lines of, you know, oh, the IDC was miscalculated or what some of the other issues are that you identified between the two agencies, OMB and OOC. But we're, we're already at 3 o'clock and we have other things on our agenda. So, I think maybe we could ask for a follow-up when you have some positive news to share about getting the money out. And all I can say is meanwhile, people are out of work and services aren't being provided because the money is not going to the entity to deliver the services for our people. So, you know, I, I know you're invested in this work and that's why you do it, but we really need to figure this out. And I, I want to make the committee available if there's policy changes or other things. But to me, this is very much an executive branch failure that we can't figure out how to move forward our grants and our funding in a timely manner. And it just, you know, is embarrassing to us before the feds, before private citizens and say sadly, before the people who need these domestic violence shelter services. So, thank you very much for the report and let's, let's keep going.
Vice Chair Slater. If necessary, the committee will put the, this particular item on the agenda for next Wednesday also. Um, with that, committee members, any more question, comments or discussion? If not, Mr. Moes. We will call a vote.
Sir, Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Purnell Halona.
Purnell Halona votes green.
Purnell Halona votes green. Honorable, excuse me, Honorable Carl Ronald Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Edison Day Wonika. Honorable Edison Day Wonika. Chair, vote of four, favor zero oppose. Four, three favor, zero oppose.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moes, let the record show a vote of three in favor. Zero oppose, the chair not voting. We still have court. With that, committee members, I feel to have the committee amend the agenda to where there would be a separate item to where DOLTEX would report on the meals and transportation. And it was listed under 5C. So I indulge the committee to, the chair will just defer that particular item to tomorrow's agenda. Because it is within the Department of Health. And Ms. Valerie Jones, if you're on the call, we had a slight misunderstanding about the intent and purpose of the agenda items. Previously, you had reported that the tri-state agreement for DOLTEX reimbursement on meals and transportation was going to be renegotiated. And that's the intent of putting that item on the agenda. And that legislative advisory didn't grasp the intent of that agenda item. So, please, if you need to redo your report, previously you had said that State of New Mexico through HB 2 was open to redoing the tri-state agreement. And Arizona hadn't. And Arizona hadn't responded, and you hadn't contacted the State of Utah. The reason it was put on the agenda was to follow up and get an update on those items. And, uh, to Honorable Halona and Honorable Paul Begay, when you do meet with the Arizona Department of Health, um, and even the, um, the intertribal, um, organizations. Oh, gosh, what's the name of the Arizona intertribal health organization? Let's see if we can get that item, uh, on their agenda so that we could also, um, if we can nudge, uh, the Arizona Department of Health, you get back to the table to basically renegotiate the tri-state agreement so that the, the reimburse, reimbursement rates for meals and transportation would, um, basically be, um, the result of the current prices for food and fuel and related expenses. Uh, committee members, uh, I'm going to ask the committee for, um, a suspension of the rules to allow, um, Dr. Harold Begay and, uh, Mr. Louis Mallette to address the committee, um, regarding, um, bringing on Dr. Gay onto the position. And, and so I would ask the committee for a suspension of the rules. And then after that, we would, uh, amend the agenda, get an update from Mr. Louis Mallette and Dr. Harold Begay.
I'll motion to suspend the four rules, Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Slater.
I'll second that motion. Hold on.
Thank you. Uh, Honorable Halona. Uh, Ms. Angelica Benali and, uh, Mr. Chata Beta, how many votes do we need to be able to suspend the rules?
Chair, this is Chata Beta, says, uh, majority, under rule twenty, suspension of rules. Parties has majority vote, and then this is the motion shall be, the motion shall, shall state its specific purpose and shall specify. Um, and Chair, back to you, majority vote.
I've listened, uh, uh, Honorable Slater. As a, uh, would the motion include, um, the statement by the chair? As rule twenty-two, the motion has to state the purpose.
Chair, it's under rule twenty.
Rule twenty, okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Beta. Good legal counsel. Patilla, Honorable Carl Slater, could you restate the motion to suspend the floor rules, including the specific purpose?
Thank you, Chair. I'll suspend the four rules to get the update from Louis Mallette and, uh, Dr. Begay. And then did you also need the inclusion for, um, with the B O H? Or are we doing that tomorrow?
We'll just defer, uh, since it wasn't listed as a separate agenda item, um, then, uh, the chair will just take action to, uh, put it on tomorrow's agenda properly. Honorable Halona. She'll put in second with the motion.
I can, Chair, sir.
Well, gracias. Uh, Mr. Moes, uh, roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Hold on, vote's green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green, Delegate Slater.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Chair, you have a vote of four in favor, zero oppose. Uh, Chair, before going further, could I get the motion at second for the social services report? For D S F?
It was Honorable Honorable Carl Slater, was it? You made the motion and Honorable Pernell Halona made the second?
Oh, for D S F, correct? That, that was correct.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Sorry for the interruption.
Right. Uh, with the vote of four in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting, we've amended the agenda, uh, abiding by rule twenty of the committee rules. Um, Mr. Louis Mallette, Dr. Harold Begay, who are you have the teleconference floor.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Honorable Vice Chair, Honorable Committee Members, and those of you on the call. Honorable Chair, so just one question, is it okay for me to discuss, uh, what I think we're about to talk about, um, in this meeting, or do we need to go to executive session?
Uh, Mr. Mallette, if that's your, uh, legal recommendation, certainly that, uh, committee can go into executive session.
Uh, thank you, sir. I think it'd be a good idea, just, um, due to the nature of the discussion, um, it might be better.
Okay.
Chair, I'll motion to enter executive session for a period of forty-five minutes maximum to discuss this report item. And, uh, I think it's because of, uh, personnel issues and sensitive matters like that that can be discussed in public.
I can, hold on.
Chair, I will second that.
Thank you. Um, I will recognize Shabiza, um, Honorable Charlene So. Um, to second the motion. Okay, committee member, or, uh, legislative staff scrambled quickly to provide, let's see, the Hess Committee Members, Legislative Advisor, Legislative, um, Recorder, the Chata Beta, if necessary, uh, Ms. Dana Bobbra.
Mr. Chair, Angelita Benali. I do not have any contact information for Dr. Begay. Um, if he could, um, maybe call me or give me an email, then I can, um, include him on the, um, Zoom, Zoom invite for the executive session.
He, I don't think he even has a Navajo Nation email address yet.
Um, he, uh, a third-party email provider can, uh, I can put that one in as well.
Uh, Dr. Harold Begay, uh, text me your email, and I'll send it to Ms. Benali. The only thing I have is your, uh, cellphone number. Okay, with that, uh, committee members, Mr. Moes, uh, please, uh, provide us the roll call vote to go into executive session.
Hi, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Hold on, vote's green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Chair, vote of, uh, vote of four in favor, zero opposed, into executive session at three sixteen P M.
Okay. We are, uh, we have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. We will go into executive session. Ms. Benali, we're emailed us the executive session number. executive session number.
Are folks on? Am I on the right line?
Uh, vice chair, this is Leonard, uh, I'm still waiting on the, um, executive session contact numbers.
Leonard, this is Tommy. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, um, is, um, Angie working on that, um, that for you or is she getting that together right now, do you know?
Uh, she should be getting it by now. Waiting for her to send it out.
Oh, okay. All right, I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Yep. Um, Slater, my s- um, Paul the Gay and Doctor Harold the Gay still out, we're still out there.
Okay, this is what.
Okay. Uh, we can't wait, um.
It, um.
I sent it to three of you. Slater, you yourself, and, and, um, Harold the Gay again.
Right here.
Yeah. You're on now, that's.
Okay, yeah, um. Vice Chair and, um, oh, yeah, I don't get it, I guess.
I don't like the X.
I'm really.
If he's in the chair then. He can sit in there with the chair.
What? No. Who doesn't come up here?
Who do you have? Cause he can be, I was waiting for you.
When I understood. Doctor the Gay was appointed by. Last Friday to go.
A lot there. Creation.
So. Uh. Call me again.
Well, I'll tell the good. They'll be there tomorrow for our committee. This is email.
Yes, I'll email back.
Not even on the end, because I don't know the, the, the question.
Happened this Friday.
No, the Gay's on. Vice Chair's still out there. Well, he was having bad connections anyway. Halona's online now. We worked about Vice Chair and.
Can you text, do you have Slater's number? Can you text him, tell him that? On the other one. I think that first one, I, I, I thought, I know I had your name written down. I thought I'd send it to you, but you went on the that first one didn't get me. But, um, but I did send it to the group, so. Keep it down, just reading that. The car. There's where's the.
Uh, yes, sir. I have a few questions.
No, Carl, Slater's on.
Am I on the wrong call then?
He's still on the other one. I see him now.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah.
I was on the wrong call. God, what am I on right now? Geez.
Each time they turn on the car.
Hmm.
The Bluetooth on that goes on. Then I lose everything over here and then it's all sounding over there.
I think they're going to do the rest and then take baby too.
Oh, cool. Mm-hmm. Let me scan it. And we have it out.
Do you want me to get yours?
Yeah.
Can I do something?
Uh-huh. I need this plugged in. You're on. Your mom's. Yeah. Scandals. That was a new one. Yeah. You already scanned my new question. I believe so. I'll double check. Amelia gets her own folder now. That's the information over. Because if they're asking for their original birth certificate, then. I said Amelia has her own folder now. Check. Oh, it's probably in the spots.
Delegate Daniel Sew is back on the call.
Delegate Sew, I'm back on the call.
All right, thank you. Dear, this is Leonard. We are very well back on the call except Honorable Halona and Honorable Wanika.
Mr. Moes, let's do roll call just to establish quorum and then we can proceed again.
All right, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Begay is present.
Honorable Paul Begay is present. Honorable Purnell Halona. Honorable Purnell Halona. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Present.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater is present. Honorable Charlene Sew.
Present.
You, Honorable Charlene Sew is present. Honorable Daniel Lee Sew.
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Edison J. Wanika. Honorable Edison J. Wanika. Honorable Purnell Halona. Area four members, constant quorum.
Thank you, committee members. So. Here's open to a motion.
Motion to exit executive session.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Slater. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Sir Che. Uh, motion and second to exec- exit executive session. Mr. Moes, roll call one more another time.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Begay, green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Purnell Halona. Honorable Purnell Halona. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene Sew.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene Sew votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wanika. Honorable Edison J. Wanika. Area vote of three in favor, zero opposed, exiting at 3:53 PM.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moes. Meeting members, how do you wish to address what the the update we received?
Motion to accept the report, Chair.
Thank you, Cecilia. Motion is recognized. And the second is recognized. Any questions, discussion? If not, then, uh, Mr. Moes, roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Paul Begay, green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Purnell Halona. Honorable Purnell Halona. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene Sew.
Green.
Honorable Carl, uh, excuse me, sorry. Honorable Charlene Sew votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wanika. Honorable Edison J. Wanika. Area vote of three in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. Three in favor, zero opposed, then. The chair not voting. The report is accepted. Committee members, uh, that takes us to. Old business, there being none. New business, there being none. We go to close of meeting. Uh, are there any announcements? State task force members are meeting in Phoenix, starting tomorrow. We have a regular meeting of the House Committee tomorrow at 10:00 AM. Committee members.
I'll second.
Uh, thank you, um, committee member. Before I recognize it. Halona just texted me and said, where is everybody? Dr. Begay is on the call. Honorable Halona, are you back on the regular session call number? Star six. Okay. Going once, Purnell Halona. Going twice, Purnell Halona. Going three times, Purnell Halona. Okay. Motion to adjourn by honorable. First lady, uh, motion, was that, uh, you, uh? Mr. Moes.
Delegate Begay.
Delegate Begay made the motion to adjourn second by Honorable Vice Chair Slater.
Sure.
Mr. Moes, there is no discussion or debate on the motion to adjourn. Proceed with the roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Purnell Halona. Honorable Purnell Halona. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene Sew.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene Sew votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wanika. Honorable Edison J. Wanika. Honorable Purnell Halona. Area vote of three in favor, zero opposed, adjourned at 3:59 PM.
Thank you. Thank you, committee members. We covered a lot of ground. Uh, healthcare providers shortages, uh, burial assistance. Um, money's going to domestic violence shelters and then, of course, the issue of the confirmation of the superintendent of DODI. Thank you for, um, being on the call and as state task force members travel to Phoenix. Uh, travel safely and for all of us. Stay safe. Wear masks. When water's not available, use hand sanitizer. And again, every, um, surface that's touched by the public and you touch it, then use sanitizer. Um, social distance and take care. With that, we are adjourned.
I'll go on next.
Go on next.
Chair, this is Wanika. I just barely, just barely got back on the line now, I guess, uh. Uh, but, uh, I'm glad you guys are done, so I'll just be on my way. I figured you guys were down by pace and where you lost, uh.
Uh-huh. Con- connectivity.
Usually, yeah. Usually, it's usually pretty good until around there, but prior to that, for some reason, I couldn't. It, it just went dead on me, so.
Yeah. Okay.
How was she, Chair?
Uh.
We'll talk again tomorrow.
Oh, how was she last, Cecilia? Travel safe, uh, what did you know?
Thank you. I'll go on there.
Hello, is anybody still online?
I am Delegate Halona. This is Angie Benelli.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know what happened. I, and, um, I went back to my Zoom information and there was only the main um, Zoom link from tenant, when the
Main, um, Zoom link from ten, when the meeting started at ten o'clock this morning. And then there was also the Zoom link that I created at four three fifteen to four fifteen for the executive session.
Well, I got on both of those, but I didn't. I tried to get on the one you had out this morning and then, uh, that was where only Dr. Begate was on that line.
Ah, I, there were other, um, the, some of the other call-ins from before we went into executive session, individuals who were still on that particular line.
Yeah, okay.
All right, well.
The number I have now, I said there's four participants still on the line, so.
Okay, well, um, you guys all have a safe trip down to Phoenix.
Well, thank you.
Okay, wear your mask. Don't take any chances. All righty, all right.
I hear that. It's a dangerous place to be going right now.
Yeah, every, everywhere.